For, what is today? September 28th, 2022. We will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance and Robert Knudsen is going to lead that for us. Thank you. We have seven items on our agenda tonight. Four of them are items that we are making recommendations to the City Council for, and the other three are items that we will be making decisions on tonight. We will start off with a roll call. We'll start with Jeff. Tell us your name and then if you would state whether you have any conflicts with any items on the agenda.
Berline Wally, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Hey. Let's start with item one. The Provo City Council Housing Committee is requesting approval of an ordinance text amendment in Chapter 14.30, accessory dwelling units. This is citywide application. And it doesn't look like Malia is here. Oh, okay. I'm like, you are not Malia.
I'm not Malia.
Okay.
I thought I would just do a quick summary of where we're at and what's happened since last time, and then I'll turn it over to Malia. So this application, it is coming through our division, but it did start with the Housing Committee, the City Council's Housing Committee, which Malia is a party to. So that's why she'll be doing the most presentation. This was continued last time. So staff could provide you with additional information, a little bit more background, a little bit more analysis, comparisons, and I believe Malia has provided that to you in these slides that she'll present. Again, this is to do three kind of major changes with the existing ADU ordinance. To open it up in residential zones west of I-15 is one change. The other change would be to increase the number of tenants in the ADU from two to three. And then the third would be allowing application process to any resident in the city to try to establish an accessory dwelling unit. So those are the three major changes you're looking at tonight, and Malia will have more on that and some more content from your questions last time.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. I am Malia. So I think most of you were here last time when we, okay, when we went through the three amendments, but I'll just go over those really quickly, just summary. I just turned the mic off. The first one is there on the right side of your screen. So this is the expansion of ADUs in all areas primarily zoned residential west of I-15. So this is just talking about internal ADUs, not external, so it does not permit external ADUs in all residential zones west of I-15, only internal. And on that same note, in the Public Works Staff Report for this meeting, there was a change in their staff report from the first, from the 14th Planning Commission meeting. Their note about current zoning densities and any financial or infrastructure implications on the west side. That note, I spoke with Public Works Development Engineer today, and that note is actually just related to external ADUs, which these amendments are not related to. So if you just want to disregard those last two sentences on the Public Works Staff Report, that would be good. And then the next amendment that we have, is there on the left side, just changing, ADU occupancy levels. So currently, you can have two related or unrelated adults together with any minor children living within an internal ADU. And that is increasing it by one, raising it to three. And so then the final amendment can see there, it's just an additional section. And this is the process through which in any, any property owner within Provo can apply to allow an ADU within, on their property. They would do this by gathering 66% of the owners of immediate properties, and the definition of immediate properties is provided there. Their consent and their acknowledgement of that and their approval of that, and that includes the 66% includes the applicant. That's language that we need to change in that, but just so you know. So those are the three amendments, just going over those really quickly. And I'm gonna go into now following up on the questions that you guys asked from the meeting on the 14th. So let me, and I think we have those. So this is the memo that was sent out from our office answering some of the questions that you have. I will say the enforcement questions, which is that third bold heading there, those were answered through some memos and data that were provided by Development Services from our zoning enforcement officer Scott, who is here today. If you have any enforcement questions, he can answer those for you. But I'll go through the other questions here. And then if you have any questions, please just interrupt. So this first one, how much does this proposal increase the percentage of area that allows ADUs in Provo? So currently, I'll go here to this for you. So the top is current, and as it stands right now in Provo. So right now in Provo, there are 8,209 residential area acreages in Provo. ADUs are prohibited in 66.8% of those, and they're allowed in 33% of those. That meets the minimum standards required by HB 82, which was passed by the state last year. So that new, that current was passed last year in December by the council. So then I split out those ADU permitted areas by east side and west side. So currently on the east side, 84% of areas that allow ADUs are on the east side, and 15% are on the west side. So the bottom chart shows that this is just conditional on the west side ADU expansion amendment. Obviously, we, I couldn't factor in the area acreage for individual properties that apply to have an ADU allowed in those because I have no way of predicting that. So this is for the west side. If ADUs are allowed in areas primarily zoned residential, so we just took an approximate, and we just did it through the R zones, which is 1,300 acres about. So then on the west side, that would increase the area acreage from 419 acres to 1,724. So it would, so then as you can see, so prohibited ADUs in the city, it would be 51% of total residential area, and permitted ADUs would be 49. So we go from 67.33 to about 50.50. So anybody have any questions on those charts? Before I go to the next question? Okay, we'll go back to this, which is kind of small, so I don't know if you can read it, but how many rentals in Provo versus the rest of Utah County? So this was asked just to try and see and place us in context of the rest of Utah County and neighboring cities. There were some questions about how many rental properties we have, can we enforce on those? We have a lot more. Do we have enough enforcement officers? So along those lines, we just kind of wanted to get a temperature on where we're at compared to everyone else. So this is from the moderate income housing report that was just passed recently by the council and put together by our development staff. But as you can, so the far left graph is Provo, and then the middle, Utah County, and then the right is the state. So in Provo, we multifamily, that green bar, that would be the high density. So that would be the rent frequently, most likely, the rental units there. And then the blues is the single family attached and detached. Yellow is mobile homes. So from this, compared to that middle one there, we have 46% of the housing stock in Provo is multifamily housing. Where in Utah County, 24% total of the housing stock is multifamily. And then in the state, it's quite similar to the county's average there. So Provo does have a significant amount more of multifamily housing than the county as an average. So the next question that we followed up on was enforcement, like I said, and so I will, if you have any questions about that, after we're done going through this, like I said, Scott is here, and he is very knowledgeable and can answer those for you. And next, we talked about, had some questions about similarly sized cities and communities and how they're doing ADUs. What are their ADUs laws look like, and how are those enforced? So I pulled some college towns, Orem, Logan, and then Salt Lake. Orem, they're allowed citywide. Generally, there are some kind of stipulations on that. But I will say they're allowed citywide. I think that's a pretty good characterization of that. It is owner occupied, just like we are with an RDL, just like us. You have to have at least three off-street parking spaces for the total property, not just for the ADU. So that includes the owner occupied part and the ADU. They have a public list of all the ADUs, which you can see online. It's really easy to look at, enforced through resident reporting, which is the same as us. Logan, they are very specific and very tedious on their ADUs. They went through parcel by parcel throughout their entire city and designated them for ADU allowance or not. And they just meet the 33% requirement almost exactly, just like we do. But they didn't do it by zones. They went individual parcel by parcel through the whole city. And then they're also owner occupied, RDL, and enforced through resident reporting, just like Provo. Salt Lake, also another college town, but also very different because it is the capital city, and they're allowed citywide generally, including multifamily and nonprimarily residential use properties. So they're a lot more relaxed on that requirement than we are. RDL is required, and largely, they all have to be owner occupied, but there are a few minor exceptions. So then just looking at similarly sized cities, West Valley, I pulled West Valley, West Jordan, and then Sandy. So West Valley, a business license, an RDL, similar. Owner occupied, you just have to have at least one additional off-street parking space. They have geographical boundaries for ADU allowance. And they don't allow any detached external ADUs. You can only have internals. And then they have that geographic boundary, like I said. And they have, so yeah, they just kind of drew lines of streets in their city and then said, west of this or east of this, it is allowed or is not allowed. So kind of similar to our west of I-15 proposed amendment. West Jordan, they, their occupancy limit is up to five unrelated adults. Ours is currently at two with the proposal to go up to three. Owner occupied, only one off-street parking space. But the existing garage or carport has to maintain their spaces. You can't turn those into the ADU. You have to keep your garage. Also an RDL, and allowed in primarily residential zones, and they have a couple of exceptions. Sandy, they are allowed citywide in any zone that allows single family or multifamily housing, and then within some business districts. They have no off-street parking requirements. They have max three total occupants of the ADU. So that's similar to what we are proposing, and then RDL required. So that's just kind of a brief and very quick run-through of other cities and what they are doing. But now I am free to answer any questions about the proposal, about any of the research. If you have enforcement questions, Scott is here and can answer those for you.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anyone have questions for Malia? Mr. Knudsen?
I just was wondering, what was the basis for thinking you wanted to raise it from two to three? What was, why?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the, I believe it answered, last planning commission, I talked about how that Housing Committee has heard and seen evidence that there is a housing shortage in Provo, and that there's especially affordable housing. And they know that changing that limit from two to three would help with that endeavor and creating more housing stock and units for people. Also, it just makes it similar to the rest of our code. In other rental units, the limit is three. It's only in ADUs that it's two. So all other rental units in Provo, it is three. So they just thought uniformity of the code, bringing it up to three, it would be easier.
Ms. Kendall, do you have a question?
That last statement one more time, Malia.
Yeah, so, so for example, if someone is renting an apartment, it's deemed an apartment, not an ADU, you can have up to three unrelated adults in that. It's only ADUs in our code where you can only have two. Two is the maximum. Everywhere else in the code, when it comes to rentals, it's three.
Is your mic on?
Trying to press this. Oh, there we go.
You don't have to hold it.
Okay, each press once. All right, I'm a newbie up here. Is there any language, for example, out of compliance ADUs for retroactively applying for approved status? Like what, how would we treat that circumstance?
Yeah, I'll answer that to the best of my knowledge, and maybe someone from development or Scott would like to answer as well. But in Housing Committee, we've discussed this about maybe if we needed language to include that in the amendments to make sure that there's a pathway for them to come into compliance.
Malia, would you have him talk to us? Because I love the way he described the enforcement process, and I think that would be very clear right here.
Sure. Hi, thank you. Appreciate taking the, or giving the opportunity to answer that. So our goal in code enforcement is compliance with the code. So I think if I understand your question correctly, if somebody's not in compliance in an area that allows for an ADU, how do they come into compliance?
No, that's not what I'm asking. I'm saying we're changing, we're making it easier to get into compliance. For example, change number three, right? I can now, anyone can apply for compliance with the 66% rule. I'm saying, let's say I have an out of compliance ADU, we pass this code, what is my process to now get a good ADU that's in compliance with code? Does that make sense?
I think that's more clear. So the process as outlined in the new code would be it's the 66% of the
I guess all I'm asking is, does the code handle that circumstance?
Yeah, there'd be no retroactive punishment for that person for being noncompliant previously. We've talked about there being a grace period, and we're not going to enforce on you for past noncompliance. We're just going from your application forward. So.
Yeah, and I'll just reiterate that, that that's the same as how we do any enforcement if, you know, if it's not currently compliant and there's a process to come into compliance, whether it's removing tenants or making an application to the city to allow for that use to take place, we allow for that process to go through before we do any enforcement.
I like that about your explanation because it showed that you were more of a hand-holding, information-spreading body instead of a police force. And so it enabled, it like built a bridge between those who didn't know what was going on and wanted to be law-abiding citizens. So.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Johnson while he's up here? Johnson, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Malia? Commissioners?
I have, I have another question. One of the, one of the key goals outlined in this proposal, saying that this will help, is develop strategies to increase owner occupancy of long-term residency. I'm curious, like from your experience or data you've looked at, does this help in increase owner occupied housing? The reason why I ask is because I have seen arguments that suggest that these become better investment properties. And so it's like, I can now, now instead of three units or one unit, it's now two I can rent out, and so it cash flows better. I'm just curious what your perspective is on that.
Yeah, so in our code, all ADUs have to be owner occupied. So that is the law. So if there's an investor that comes and buys a home and creates an ADU, and then rents it out as two units, that's becoming a duplex, that's illegal. So that would be handled by code enforcement.
What if you move? Like what if I owner occupied, rent out the second unit, and then move? Am I now forced to sell my house? I'm just curious about that circumstance.
Wait.
Yes.
So that, that is an issue we come, so again, compliance with the code is the goal. So there's a number of ways for you to come into compliance. One would be selling it. Then you no longer have a legal ownership in the property, and whoever does own it would have to meet the code. Another would be move back in. Another would be just simply reduce the total occupancy to what the legal occupancy of a single-family dwelling would be. So you could still rent it out just as a single-family dwelling.
Answer your question, Scott, while you're there.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Can you answer this one?
Sure.
So can you, will you explain to us how you determine if it is owner occupied? What are the criteria that the city uses, and how do you enforce that? Because sometimes people will put children in there. And so can you explain to us what the process is?
Sure. So in, in the code for 1430 of ADUs, one of the units must be occupied by an owner occupant, which is a defined term in our code. And there's a pretty big list of what is defined as an owner occupant. But essentially, all persons who have an owning interest in the property must live in the home for that person to be an owner occupant. So if it's owned by an LLC, all owners of the LLC have to live in the home to be able to rent out the accessory dwelling unit. If it's under a trust, that all trustors of the trust must live in the home to be able to rent out the accessory dwelling unit.
How does the city enforce that? How do you determine that? What documents do you look at? How does the city enforce that?
So we, we generally go off of county records that shows who owns the property. If, if we see it's owned by an LLC, we do our best research to contact somebody within that LLC to determine who owns it and require them to provide us paperwork showing who owns it. If they're claiming that the owner, you know, all owners live there, then they are to provide us documentation to prove that or to show that so that we can verify that it is owner occupied. And if we have any questions, then we refer to our legal department to review those documents to see if we're missing anything.
What if it's being Airbnb'd?
Short-term rentals are not allowed in residential zones.
I know. I'm asking about the enforcement, because I guess I'd say like, that would be my biggest concern is I just know there's a lot of out of compliance Airbnb's in the city, and it's really hard to enforce. And so now you're making these properties really, really nice Airbnb acquisition targets. That being said, I'm very for this. We need more affordable housing in the city. Anyone who has loved ones trying to get housing know how hard it is. But I'm just trying to understand how this will actually play out.
So we do enforce on short-term rentals. I have a list of properties that we've enforced on just over the past couple of months where we, I think we have 10 to 15 properties that we have completed enforcement, where properties have come into compliance after being used as short-term rentals. I know that we have many more in the city that are being used that way. And as we have the resources to go after and enforce on those, we're doing it.
This is actually my number one concern with this opening up is I don't, I'm not concerned that enforcement has the manpower and the system to do it. I'm concerned with the fact that the enforcement is based on neighbors ratting on each other. And I feel like the culture in Provo and the interconnectedness of most neighborhoods because of religious or school boundaries or whatever, makes it very difficult to have a successful makes it very difficult to have a successful enforcement that's consistent like that. And I don't know if this is from Miss Daly, but has the Housing Committee discussed how to, how, is there a way to enforce housing like this when you're opening up possibly a can of worms?
Yeah.
Makes it so neighbors don't have to rat on each other for it to be a consistent enforcement process.
See, I think that's been a constant concern in Provo for occupancy in general is how, how can we enforce occupancy without having, you know, one neighbor complaining about the other neighbor? I don't know that I have a good answer for that. The, the only way to really proactively that I can, well, I won't say the only way, but the, the strongest way I think that we could proactively do it is go door-to-door knocking on every neighbor's doors, asking them how many people are living there. I don't think that's something that the city wants to do and is, that's realistic for staff to be able to do. And so we do rely on citizens to let us know where the concerns are so that we can address them.
Well, why can't we use Airbnb listings as a means to enforcement? Can you explain that?
The state law, um, a couple of years ago made it so that municipalities cannot enforce on properties for simply advertising a property as a short-term rental. But we can go after them for the use. So we have to be able to prove the use of the property as a short-term rental. And we have ways of, of getting that information.
Are there ways of, um, educating, um, as like, I, I've always thought that it would be easy to have some sort of arrangement or agreement with title companies or real estate agents or something where they have the accountability to sell things accurately and to, to disclose things accurately? Cause I think I was, I was corresponding with you this week and I feel like a lot of the infractions are, and this is why this comes into play, is a lot of the infractions are just simply ignorance, like they didn't know. There's, there's some of them that are doing it intentionally and there's some that aren't asking so that they don't know and they're not accountable. But I think a lot of them just really truly saw there was a second door and thought, saw it as an investment opportunity. So are there other things that the Housing Committee, Miss Daly, has discussed? Or that enforcement has seen that we could have some sort of an educational aspect to this that goes out regularly as a contact with property owners as, as properties change hands? It seems like with, with computers, the way they are, that you should be able to sift through new turnover and give them some accountability for these rules that are commonly broken. I don't know, maybe that's, that's just crazy talk, but.
That's a great idea. I'd love to maybe explore that more as I, as I, I don't know, with the Housing Committee.
Yeah, so there's actually been talks of, um, some kind of requirement or amendment like that up at the state before. Um, but there's been heavy pushback from, um, realtors because they don't want to be forced to disclose certain things. And they don't want, so there are some requirements of things that they do have to disclose, obviously. But listing A D U's as a listing has been brought up and that has been shot down. So.
All right, I have a few questions for Miss Daly and maybe Mr. Day. On page six of the staff report, this is more feedback than a question, but, um, items two, three, and four, I feel like the language is very confusing. It's like if this, then this, but not this. And if you're standing on one leg, then not this. And if you close your eyes and like, it just, it just feels very circuitous. And I'm wondering if we can make the language clearer. It, it's very confusing to know exactly. It's like all these zones, except this zones on Tuesdays. You know, it's just very confusing to me. It doesn't feel straightforward.
Yes, that is something that we have discussed multiple times in Housing Committee, um, as something to kind of clean up this entire chapter section because it is very confusing and it's hard, um, for residents to kind of understand what is allowed or isn't allowed. I get calls and emails of people being like, well, can I rent this or not? And so that is something we've talked about as a company and something we're going to look at. It's on our list.
Okay. That would be one of my, that would be one of my recommendations, the way this goes, is to make it clear because if we're trying to make it so that the public understands what the requirements are and we're opening something that some people are afraid of and some people are embracing, we want to make sure there's no question about where it's allowed.
Yes.
I feel like instead of saying it's allowed everywhere, except here, here, and here, why don't we just say it's allowed here? You know, like, why don't we just specify where it's allowed instead of making it? It seems like it's all-inclusive and then it pulls back and it's restrictive in its language. So. I'm, I'm sure there's legal reasons for that, that, that.
Part, part of that was the nature of H B eighty-two. It's written that you're allowed to not prohibit in. So it's like a double negative. And so we mirrored that in our code. So that's part of the reason why it's written very complicated.
Okay. Um, my other question is a sewer question. Actually, I'll ask one more to you before we have Mr. Day come up. Just to clarify, on page nine, um, it is number four B. When it's talking about if a single person lives in the main dwelling that they, um, couldn't have, because the main dwelling would technically allow a family plus the three people in the A D U. But this is saying if it's a single person living in the main house, that they wouldn't be allowed to have two extra roommates as consti, as is constituted normally. Is that, am I understanding that correct, correctly?
Okay.
And if so, what, what is the meaning of this?
Yes, so this actually came up. I had, um, we had a, um, citizen actually call us and ask us about this very, this very item. They are, I'm gonna wait and have Development Services describe this because I don't want to say it wrong.
Mr. Ardmore, you got your head wrapped around it? So it says the main dwelling unit shall be limited to one family as that term is defined in chapter fourteen point oh six, except that if the A D U is also occupied, the occupancy of the main dwelling unit may not include the two additional related or unrelated individuals described in the definition of family.
Yeah, so I, I think what that's referring to is, so you've got in the definition of family, you've got the head of household. And then there's some subsections to that. And one of those subsections is two additional unrelated persons. So your head of household and everyone related to you. And generally in a single-family dwelling with only one kitchen, you can also have two boarders living with you. That's what's excluded. Right. That's what's excluded in A D U's. You can have your head of household and everyone living with you or three unrelated persons, which is a second, or a, a separate, um, definition of family.
Right, but this is actually seems to be saying to me that in this particular case, if the main occupant in the dwelling, which has to be a family, the owner occupied. So let's pretend that my husband dies and my children have all moved out and I want to now have an A D U. I can't have two other people living with me upstairs, plus three people living in my basement.
You, you can because in the definition of family, you've got three related or unrelated individuals.
I feel like B is, is actually making an exception for that one case right there. It's saying if you're a single person who's the owner occupied person of the resident in the dwelling, that you can't have those two unrelated roomers or boarders living with you, plus your A D U. You can only have the A D U.
Okay, so if, if we were to pull up the definition of family as it's written in the code, that subsection is referring to is only under the subheading of the head of household and all those related. There's a second definition of family, which is three.
Right, I understand that. I understand exactly that there's either a family that's all related or three unrelated people. But I feel like the language in four B is contrary to that. That it's actually saying if you're a single person, this doesn't apply to you.
You want me to chime in, Scott, and save you? Um, so.
Thank you, Marcus.
Sure. Uh, so in, in title fourteen, chapter six, it defines family, right? And there are three definitions that we use in Provo. One individual living alone is one definition. Uh, you know, one, but not more than one at the same time of, you know, and it has a head of house, and then it kind of goes through a little bit. But the, the gist of it is there's a head of household, which is a defined term. And then all people related to that head of household as spouse, parent, child, grandparent, grandchild, brother, sister, uncle, aunt, nephew, niece, great-grandparent, great-grandchild, right? By blood, marriage, whatever. And then it says, and not more than two additional related or unrelated persons. And then there's a third definition, um, which is three related or unrelated individuals. And then any, any children, any minor children of any of the. So those are three separate definitions. So in, in title fourteen, chapter thirty, when we're talking about accessory dwelling units, where it says in four B there that you're referencing, the occupancy of the main dwelling unit shall be limited to one family as determined as defined in four, chapter fourteen oh six that I just quoted from. Except that, that if the accessory dwelling unit is also occupied, the occupancy of the main dwelling unit may not include the two additional related or unrelated individuals described in subsection B one, capital B. That is a reference to the head of household portion of the definition. Right? So it's not a, it's not a reference to the three related or unrelated portion of the definition.
Right, but what?
In that one specific situation where you can have a head of household and anybody with a certain relationship to that head of household, plus two additional people. All they're saying is, if you have an A D U, you can't have those plus two people along with the head of household and every related to the head of household. It doesn't affect single person living alone. It doesn't affect three related or unrelated people, that portion of the definition of the family. It only affects that specific subsection of definition of, that makes sense?
Well, kind of, except that if there's the different definitions of family and you have three unrelated people that you said it doesn't affect, they could still live in that main unit and then have some in the A D U. How is that, that doesn't make sense? If it's a single person, they can't have two, but you can have three unrelated, like, isn't that the same thing?
So again, if it's one individual living alone, then that's just a separate definition, right, of a family. If it's a head of household, that's what it's targeting, right? If it's three related, unrelated individuals, and that's the definition of family you're working with, the, you can't have two more people part, it's not implicated because those three related or unrelated individuals, that's it. That's the sum total of people that makes a family. They don't get the two boarders on top of the three related.
Okay. I'm, I'm still unclear about the language, but I don't want to take any more time talking about it. I feel like it's confusing, but it's, it's not a deal breaker. It's more of a, this is also another area, Miss Daly, that
is confusing.
Clearly, some of us are seeing differently and we'd like to make sure it's clear. I have a question from the last meeting. Did you determine how to regulate, um, the owner being in a care facility or something for a period of time? I know that was one of the things that people weren't sure of.
Yeah.
Cause people were like, what if they're in a, in a care facility for seven years? How does that fall in these rules? I just want to make sure we got all those questions cleared up from the last.
Yeah, so that's something that I brought up to the Housing Committee as a, um, a future thing to study. But as that's not part of this amendment that was presented, we can't like change that.
We're just gonna throw that out there as a lesson.
So that is noted.
And then my final question is for Mr. Day. Why, why is it okay to have an internal A D U? But not an external A D U as far as sewer goes? Is it not actually the number of times a toilet is flushed, but the number of hookups to the main sewer line? Is that the only difference there? Do you want me to restate my question?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
David Day with Public Works. So our concern is, um, an A D U being just another house, right? Uh, not a concern with A D U's that are part of a house, like a basement apartment, a, a garage converted into an apartment, but a facility that essentially is a whole nother home, housing a whole nother family, which creates a whole bunch more water and sewer demand. So with the proposal that's before you, we don't really have a concern with it. Our concern is with, uh, what would look like a townhome type situation with an A D U.
Is it because there's more hookups to the main line and not more sewage being, being produced?
More hookups and more sewage. So, uh, you'd have the capability of having more people in the unit.
If it's separate.
Yeah, and, and the physical capacity of two services versus one. So we're supportive of A D U's and we're supportive of the proposal that's before you, uh, as Public Works. But we're just doing F Y I. We're analyzing that right now and, um, just want you to be aware that doubling the density across the whole city could have financial implications for our utility system.
Okay, so you might have issues after all? They're just not stated in the staff report? Is that what that means? Is we're thinking about it? It might be, it might be a mu, a bit much?
We, we've looked at it enough that we don't feel like the current proposal is an issue. But if, if we, um, extend it beyond this, we'll, we'll need to really look at it closer to see if there's a financial burden.
Okay.
That'll need to be absorbed.
Thank you. Any other questions from Commissioner for Mr. Day?
Extend it beyond this. How could you extend, extend it beyond this? Isn't this extending it to the max in this?
Um, so from a, from a situation where you're, uh, an internal A D U versus a, a separate unit. So an A D U can be the same size unit as the main dwelling, just not any bigger. So you essentially could have two fifteen hundred, two thousand square foot units side by side on the same lot. Um, as long as they met all of the zoning and such, but, uh, i- if we went to that, you'd essentially double the amount of, uh, sewage and water in our system. And our storm drain doesn't care about how many people are there, but it's just the, the water being used and the sewer produced by those connections. So.
Any other questions for Mr. Day? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any neighborhood chairs that would?
Can I just ask one more clarification from Malia? Um, under the purpose and objectives, it says, uh, to offer financial security for homeowners and to offer security against problems associated with fragil, I'm sorry, frailty in old age. Do we have already the ability to, isn't there a clause already of an A D U when they are over a certain age?
Yeah, over sixty-five.
Over sixty-five, anywhere in the city, somebody can already have an A D U?
Yes.
Good question. All right, are there any neighborhood chairs here tonight that would like to address this issue? We're gonna give neighborhood chairs three minutes when your time is up. If you would finish talking and let the next person come forward.
Becky Bogdan, Lakewood. Um, the comments I've heard about this on the west side in general are if code enforcement is actually enforced, then they're okay with this. Um, and then Becky Bogdan, resident, would be, I am concerned and I expressed this last time. Move-up homes are very much needed in West Provo. North Park has already expressed that their homes, for the most part, have turned into duplexes. They hardly have anything there left with more than three bedrooms. And it creates a problem for North Park. And so they're embracing and excited about the external A D U because it allows the whole five-bedroom, six-bedroom home to stay intact with the rental opportunity out in the yard. Um, West Provo will never have that opportunity. The homes that are coming in with basements are not really basements. You guys all know that they're quasi-basements. Um, to me, it would be easier to convert that into a duplex rather than taking an existing house and putting a kitchen in the basement and, and refurbishing that because you're gonna have to finish a basement anyway. Um, so those themes. And then they did say that they tried to put it on the west side because it's further away from B Y U. But I'd like it noted that that is actually closer to Utah Valley University. And so if we're using that argument, it really doesn't apply to west of the freeway because we are really close to the second university, which is a really large university and in, in the county. So if it's going to be like this citywide, I would encourage you to look at the west side and apply it the same way it would be throughout the rest of the city instead of singling the west side out as, as a test piece, so to say, to see how that's gonna work. Um, I am very appreciative of all of your comments and all of your concerns and, and everything you've done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Leo Lines, Joaquin neighborhood, the highest density neighborhood in Provo. Uh, Provo already is sixty-five percent rental, so we only have thirty-five percent that aren't rental. Um, and a lot of the rental is not being enforced. They, they were like approved for couples, but then they've switched to singles. And now it's exasperated. That's a lot in my neighborhood. So my biggest concern here is, if you're gonna do something, make sure you put that parking in there. I, I really regret when the legislature passed the bill saying that college towns can have, well, first they started with foreign-related and then they pared it back. But if they put a parking thing in there, it would have solved a lot of the stuff. Because in a residential neighborhood, you don't have enough, a lot enough parking for teenagers anyway. And now you put an A D U in, it's just a nightmare. And, and, you know, it, it's dangerous. It's just a nightmare and and, you know, it it's dangerous. You got a lot of cars parked and balls running out in the street, you know, whammo. So. Double little. Always go to the other side with the parking, make it harder. Not everybody can have an ADU. The the house doesn't have enough land or the it's just not fit for that. Get some off street parking because the the on street is used anyway. So that's my biggest concern. Thank you.
Any other neighborhood chairs? All right, do we have any neighbors that would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Um, we'll close the public comment portion and we will have the Commissioners. Discuss this and possibly make a motion, see where we're at. My question before we start our discussion is have all the concerns and questions that led to the continuance in the last meeting been addressed? Do you? Commissioners feel like you know the things you didn't understand before? I got a yes from Berlaine. Okay, the questions have been answered then. How do you feel about the? Proposal? The changing the language to be on the west side? And to allow sixty six percent to have everyone throughout the city apply with signatures? And to increase the number from two to three? Berlaine is informing Melissa that she has a question.
I'll listen to.
Okay. I could start off by saying. Changing the unrelated adults in an ADU from two to three doesn't bother me because I think it does simplify the enforcement process and the education process if everything is consistent throughout the code. Means one more parking space required, hopefully.
Parking space required?
Yes, Ms. Daly, you nodded yes. Or a fraction of a parking space as required by one extra body?
If you have an ADU, you have to have four off street parking spaces. That's a requirement. Yes.
Okay.
So.
How many of those are for the?
Sorry, was that?
How many of those would be for the primary household and how many for the ADU?
You have to have a parking space like per car for the people that are in the ADU.
So if you had three people, you'd have to have three off street parking plus what's required for the owner occupied parking, which is two. Is that correct?
Yes.
You'd have to have a total of five.
I can speak to this if.
Thank you, Marcus.
Can you tell us who you are?
Marcus Draper, Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you. I can't see if there's any identification. I just see your head.
So, no, that's fine. So the the way the ordinance is written is that if you just have a single family home, you need at least three, you know, off street parking by. At a minimum, but you also need at least one off street parking space for every car at the house. So if you have a situation where, you know, you have a husband and wife and they have like three teenagers. Then and they all have their own car, then you would need five off street parking spaces.
Is that true even without an ADU?
Correct. So with an ADU, all it does is it it changes the threshold minimum to four. So regardless of how many cars you have, you need to have at least four off street parking spaces. However, if you have a situation where you have three unrelated people in the main dwelling unit, three unrelated people in the accessory dwelling unit. Then you would need, and they all have their own car or in some circumstances, weird as this seems to me, some people have more than one car and they're like twenty two. And unmarried.
We can't relate to that.
I I don't really relate to that. But any event, you know, they'd have to have a an off street parking space for every car. So in that case, you know, if everybody has one car, then they would need six.
The one.
That's per ordinance.
Because what it what it says now is four.
So four is a is a is a baseline minimum. But it also says you need to have four, but in no circumstances can you have less than the number of cars that are there.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to be sure we're clear on, that if we increase to three in the ADU. Then there's already a provision for increasing parking.
Right, it's built in. So, I mean, you would need to have a minimum of four, but if you if there are six cars at the unit and then you would. That, you know, whole house, including ADU, then you would need six. And if there are seven, you would need seven, and that's just built into the system.
But once again, that's built in under the assumption that a neighbor is going to be bothered by it and report it, right?
Right, uh, you know, our primarily our enforcement is complaint based, and I think there's numerous reasons for that. Resource management is one of them. But also I think the alternative is that we go around and patrol neighborhoods and look for violations of city code. I don't think people want us to do that.
That turns you into a police body. But education, if we can figure out how to get this information out, then. We can hopefully fix it. So, okay. So the the two increasing the ADU from two to three. Can we check that off of our list of things to discuss?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay.
Although the one concern I have about that is is my biggest concern and that. In the general plan, we talk a lot about increasing availability of housing. But we also, at the same time, talk about. Supporting family, single family neighborhoods. And so if. Those two sometimes are competing entities, and I want to make sure that there's a balance. So if we increase density. In the ADUs, even the ones that exist, we are increasing the pressure that exists on single family. Parking, everything about it. The number of people, so. That's the one concern I have. Well, let's how do we balance that? Because it the supporting single family neighborhoods is in the general plan just as clearly as is the housing issue. That's so I I I agree, it's probably going to be okay, but.
True.
And that leads to, I think you balance it by putting a limit on. I I'd love to hear more of what you have to say first.
I like how you described that we're supporting one general plan goal at the expense of another. That's good to remember that we are trying to meet the demographic. That we've talked about having a diversity of housing on the west side, for example. But and also more of that housing. Yet we're putting the strain on single family neighborhoods. Okay. That is a good thing to keep in mind. How about? The first one, ADUs is a permitted use in all areas west of I fifteen. How do we feel about that and the information we've received tonight and two weeks ago? I appreciated Ms. Bogdan's comments about the west side isn't a test. Um, but I also feel like one of the general plan goals was specifically to have diverse housing on the west side. That was something they came up with in the southwest. Area plan. And also in the general plan. And so, once again. Trying to find that balance in in meeting those general plan goals.
What's the like, just really TLDR, Too Long Didn't Read, Quick Summary Upshot on? The one, basically the change we're making in the west side versus three, what we're allowing the rest of the city is is basically it is only a staff review process and you don't have to get neighborhood. Neighbor approval?
My understanding, correct me, staff, if I'm wrong. My understanding is opening it up on the west side only as an internal. Can't be it can't be an external ADU, so it has to be within the house. It's already there. So that's less of a strain on the system. And then the third option is that you can apply for it, but you have to basically have an election with your neighbors to say they're okay with it. So that would be the citywide aspect. So basically, anywhere in the city in a residential zone could apply for it if their neighbors are okay with it.
So under one, if you live west of the I fifteen, you basically can have an internal ADU with no approval. You just can do it, or you have to still get staff approval?
You still have to get this, meet the criteria.
It's a normal process.
There's two steps for the process. The first is a building permit to establish the the new unit. And a second on the tail end of that building permit is a rental housing license. So it's a it's a business license that gets renewed every year from the owner.
Okay.
That's a good question, though. Can neighbors on the west side have sixty six percent of their neighbors give a signature saying that they're okay with an external ADU, or is that not an option at all on the west side?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to understand.
I'm guessing from Mr. Day's comments, it's not an option at all, but how is that met in the language here?
Um, our amendment doesn't focus on external ADUs, so we don't. External ADUs still follow the normal process in code. We haven't looked at those yet as a housing committee.
So the sixty six percent is only pretending to internal as well?
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. Commissioners, any other? Items of discussion for these to try and? Narrow our concerns down?
No, I appreciate Melissa's concern about, you know, the. Character of the neighborhoods and trying to balance these competing goals. Uh, I do really like the aspect of turning. The decision to the local neighborhoods with the sixty six percent. I don't think we're going to go willy nilly because I think in those areas. There isn't a lot of support for, you know, mass ADUs. But in the occasions that there are for good reasons, then the neighborhoods have the opportunity to make that happen. So. I like the path forward, and I don't think it's going to open the floodgates per se.
I like that, too. Mr. Pepperoni last in the last meeting said. Sometimes they'll go and enforce and they'll say, oh, not that one. We meant this one. We like that one, but we don't like this one. And I like the fact that having to have a rental dwelling license. Means that there's is an annual that they have to renew that. So there's an annual review so that if there's somebody who is in compliance and is following the rules, they have to come in. So if it changes ownership or or they come out of compliance, there's a a check process there. I think that will help it from getting out of control, too. Or at least if sixty six percent of people had to vote on it. In the first place, the neighbors will kind of already know the process if if something changes. I like that.
Also, I wanted to comment on the on Ms. Bogdan's comment about the west side being a test piece. I can appreciate the sentiment, although I do think that it's really infrastructure driven, according to Mr. Day, and. I think that's that's pretty important that we we track with that because.
I'm also very sensitive to the fact that we have gone through many meetings to come up with these area plans and with these general plan goals and area goals. And so if we have a goal that says we want diverse housing, but we're every time something comes forward that says. I don't like that one. I don't like that one. I don't like that one. Well, how are we going to meet that goal? At some point, we have to come together and meet that goal in a reasonable way. I I liked, too, that she was giving suggestions on. We're okay with it if enforcement is good. And so that that's another vote for if if we can manage this well, it can be done well, I felt like. Hey, any other comments among Commissioners with each other? Do we feel like we're ready for a motion, or do we want to hash this out some more? Because we love to sit here all night if we can, talking about one item. That was a joke. That was a big joke.
There's a lot of people here for other items.
I know. It wasn't a funny joke. It was just a joke.
And the other concern I had is once you turn a property into an ADU. It chops up the home. It's difficult. Oh, sorry, it's difficult to get that back. And so I I worry also that. You know, we're we're trying to create affordable housing, yet a family can only afford a house with an ADU. If they have that ADU rented out. And then when they desire to have the space for all of their family, they can't afford the home anymore. Because home prices go up when there's an ADU. So. In places where we have ADUs, we notice all of the home prices are almost outpricing. Families because.
With the anticipation that you can use it as a rental property.
Right, that's right. So I worry that that's going to get even worse. So again, we're back to that balance. So. Honestly, I would prefer that this was done in a measured way. And if we can see that those fears are not panning out, then it could be readdressed and broadened. But. I I would actually propose that we make a recommendation to the city council. That we support this with some sort of limit to start so that we can. Pose and see those concerns are. A zoning keeps up, see if we have trouble with Airbnbs, because I I agree with that comment that this might. Create better investment properties.
I liked the point that Mr. South made. If the neighbors have to buy in. Then it's less likely to get out of control. So I don't know if this is even something we can recommend. But is it feasible to say, let's not make it all the way across the west side? Why don't we make that sixty six percent? For the west side as well? Would that would that sort of slow things down and make you feel less worried about that?
That would help. One of the other issues is that in some areas right now, we have overlays like S overlays. And if you say you need sixty six percent of the neighbors, well, what if sixty six percent of the neighbors are also unowner occupied? And so, yeah, sure. You know what I'm saying? So as soon as then it then it creeps because you can get sixty six percent. They're not.
If everyone next to you is doing the same thing.
Yes.
But don't they have to like verify? It's not just a signature on a piece of paper. They would have to verify that they are the property owner of that. Property before they can sign off, so. Is that a reasonable thing that we as a planning commission can recommend if we were to say we would like to recommend this for approval, but we don't like the straight across the west side? Option?
Yeah, in in your motion, recommendation to the city council, you can recommend approval. With added recommendation of adjusting the the ordinance, the proposed amendment to. Allow the sixty six percent on the west side rather than just a blanket.
The sixty six percent citywide as opposed to.
That could be in in your motion.
In our motion.
Yep.
How do Commissioners, how do you feel about that slight change? Does that change anything? Make it better, make it worse? Mr. Whitlock, that feels good to you?
Yeah.
Mr. Koenigsen, I know that you've been an advocate for the west side, worrying about how things can run away over there. Does that make you feel better about the west side? Mr. South?
I'm not sure I completely understand it. We're saying that they do the same process for election, so they'd have to have sixty six percent of their neighbors. As signatures to to approve that.
So we're basically saying we're getting rid of. Of bullet point one and just having bullet point two and three.
Yeah, the west side carve out is not.
West side is then. Under the same process as the rest of the city. Comments on that? Concerns?
I think the thing that it would be problematic is the beginning of her presentation, which is the west side has way less ADUs and so. Part of this goal, I think, of making the carve out was to help them get closer to the. Amount mandated by the the law, state law. Is that correct?
Well, we have enough to meet the state law as it is. So this is just trying to diversify and meet that goal. Yeah, make it more even.
I think it'll slow adoption to the point that it really. It could slow adoption to the point that it doesn't actually have an effect in the same way that I think it could happen. In all the other residential zones where we have to get sixty six percent of everybody's buy in in order to make that happen. I think it. It may it may just not do much. I think.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing in your mind?
I think I think the needs of housing supply are pretty big, and I think that's. So I think it's a bad thing that if we don't get that moving, I think we just it's not going to do much. Yeah, exactly. It sounds like a very hard hurdle personally. And I mean, I understand the concerns, but this is the challenge with the growing city is like, it's like. You want the housing because everyone knows housing is too affordable. We have a housing crisis in our city, like people cannot afford housing, but then no one wants to make the concessions to actually allow the housing in their area. I understand the concerns. It's it's tough, but that would be my concern. It's like, we're basically doing nothing because sixty six percent sounds really hard. You have to be motivated. The people who are going to get the. Uh, exceptions are the motivated individuals and the motivated individuals are going to be investors. That's my thought.
Keep it the way they have it. Okay. We need to make a motion and decide on this. I don't think we can talk about it. We can talk about it all night long, but it's not going to solve the problem. So. I would say Commissioners, can we have a motion that moves this forward to the city council with either an approval or denial and then puts on? Your concerns on that? Anyone have a motion?
I'm, uh, yeah, so I think what we should do is let's if this doesn't pass, then we can add the caveats. That's how it from a process perspective makes sense to me. And so I would make a motion to try and, I don't know, what's the formal wording? A motion to vote on? I make a motion to vote on item one.
Here's what you say. You say, I would like to make a motion that we recommend to the city council because this is their decision. Okay?
I would like to make a motion that we recommend the city council. That the we're approving an ordinance text amendment in chapter fourteen dot thirty, accessory dwelling unit, citywide application. Is that good?
Okay, I'll second it. Is there any discussion on that motion? Do we need to clarify what we're actually? My question is, are we recommending it exactly as proposed in the staff report with the three bullet points, all three areas?
As proposed.
No modifications, no concerns. Is there anyone who has any discussion on that motion? Okay. We will. We're voting on whether we are recommending approval. As stated. Mr. Whitlock?
Yay.
Yay. Go ahead.
Hi.
Hey, hi.
Hi.
I'm actually going to vote nay. It's not a popularity contest, so.
Twist.
All right, so we have one, two, three, four, five votes in favor. All right. So we have one, two, three, four, five votes in favor. You said yay, right? Is that illegal?
I, I just have.
For the record, we have five for and one against and one person who had voters remorse, but already put their ballot in.
The reason, the reason is I, I would love to forward it with some specific concerns. That's the reason why. Because I thought, well, the city council can deal with those concerns. And dressed in another way, that's why I voted.
Mr. Ardmore, do you feel like you know what our concerns are going forward? Or would you like us to delineate those for you?
So I've got, uh, four. First, let me address, we've got four yay votes and two, Lisa and Melissa, nay votes. I have written down noted all the concerns as you've been speaking tonight. So those should be in the report of action to the city council.
Okay. He accepted your amended vote. All right. Thank you very much. Item two. This is also an administrative legislative item. John Jensen requests approval of general plan amendments to section one point two point nine in the Lakeview North neighborhood and appendix C five in the Lakeview Fields SDP as part of rezon request from the R one twenty zone to the VLDR very low density residential zone for property at eighteen seventy-eight North and eighteen oh four North Geneva Road. This is in the Lakeview North neighborhood and Mr. Ardmore is going to present it to us.
Thank you. So this is essentially a two-fold application. It's a general plan text amendment and a general plan map amendment. But the conclusions, as you'll see, are, are essentially the same from staff. So let me go through it. The, the purpose of this, oh, wow, that went fast. Okay. The purpose of this, uh, general plan amendment, uh, that's being brought forward by both John Jensen and Jay Henry, who have property. Let me skip over to the map. They, they have control or ownership of these properties and are, are working on with staff rezones and concept plans for these properties to develop them. Now, the reasons that they're here tonight to ask for a general plan amendment is because with their concept plans, there are, there are continuing to be comments from staff, different divisions of, of city staff that need to be addressed. Rather than have them continue to go through review after review and spend more money and time on, on these concepts, we thought it would be appropriate to bring forward the, the general plan amendment. Cause if the general plan amendment that they would need to do those concepts doesn't work, doesn't get approved, then the concepts don't really matter. So, so we, we're bringing this forward by itself for that reason. And those changes proposed are in front of you. The first, all of them have to do with, in the text part of it, section one point two point nine, which is the, the general plan goals envisioned for, for the area plans. This, this is specific to the, the western section of the city. So the first proposal that they have is on the, about the middle of your page on the very bottom on the screen. The overall density of the area should average four units to the acre. That's the current code. They're proposing to amend that to say four to seven units to acre. You can imagine as some of our conversation went in the last item, this resulting in a doubling of permitted units on the West Side could put a very large strain on the city's infrastructure, not only wastewater, but water infrastructure that has a, a large financial weight with it. And the same can be said for their next proposed change to this section. You could see B on the right side of the screen is the same as, as the, the four to the seven. This, in this case, three to seven, but then the next portion is, is adjusting the very lot size policies. These policies were established within the last year or two by the city council to effectively provide a mix of housing on the West Side. Regulating a mix of small and medium or medium, large housing lots to, to provide a mixing of, of home sizes to get a variety out there on the West Side. Now you can see in the small lot, the current standard, uh, minimum for a small lot is eight thousand square feet, which translates in the rest of the table to, you know, max units dependent on how many acres you have to develop. The proposal they have on this is to have that from eight thousand square feet to four thousand. So again, there's another doubling of maximum, uh, another doubling of, of proposed or permitted units on the West Side. And so again, it's that same concern of, of straining on the infrastructure. The last, if I can scroll forward, there we go. The last of these proposed text amendments is, oh, thank you. The last of these proposed text amendments is here on the bottom in number five. And that's, that's where we start getting into the general plan map amendment where the general plan has identified this section between sixteen eighty North and two thousand North and Geneva Road as a specific area plan that should be developed right now as R one twenty or single family residential dwellings that don't go above the maximum density allowed. They, uh, the applicants are proposing to add the language or very low density residential, which takes again from three to four units per acre where the very low density residential allows up to seven units per acre. So in effect, all of these text amendments are a concern for staff as it relates to, uh, public works and infrastructure, um, concerns, capacity concerns. And I'll just briefly go through this map because I think it's more of the same. Uh, so again, there's the properties that, that are being proposed to, to make these changes. There's the existing general plan appendix C five. So this is a, a map within the general plan, kind of detailing how, uh, concept wise that, that area should, should be built out. You can see there, uh, it's, it's basically R one twenty to R one ten layout. Jeez. I don't know why that's going so fast. I'm sorry. All right. Hold on.
Car sick here.
I'm sorry. One at a time. There we go. Okay. So I've overlaid, uh, that current appendix with, with the, the concepts as they are now. Like I said in the beginning, they're still working through some things on these, but these are the, the most up to date concepts on what they have proposed, a mix of single family lots, twin homes, townhomes, essentially changing the area in red from forty-eight units to ninety-four units. I know I'm, I'm sounding repetitive, but again, this is, this is going to put a strain on, on sewer connections and, and, and water infrastructure. So staff, because of those, those concerns with infrastructure is recommending denial on this to the, to the planning commission and city council. But that is all I have prepared. I know the applicant has some slides prepared as well.
Commissioners, do we need any clarifications or any questions answered from Mr. Ardmore? Mr. Knutson?
We went through, Sid's here in your under neighbor, under neighborhood issue. It talks about additionally, the West Side neighbors went through a rigorous area planning process over two years to define density limits and areas approved for higher density. So there were certain nodes in the West Side. If we had a kind of a map of the West Side or certain nodes or certain intersections where we said we were going to allow some kind of mixed use type. Maybe a little more dense.
I appreciate you mentioning that.
Was this area one of those?
This area was not one of those. Um, so what, what Robert is alluding to is the Southwest future land use map that was adopted by the city council. Robert was part of that process that started in, I believe, twenty sixteen. It took a couple of years to get that map out, working with the residents and the, the city council planning commission at the time, where, where these infrastructure constraints, um, desired land uses, all these things came into the discussion and, and that map came out. That map calls for increased density in certain areas, right? Important nodes along Lakeview Parkway, um, on Center Street and Geneva. These are some areas that would call for higher density. This in fact is not one of those areas on the map. Thank you.
That's a good reminder that, uh, having those West Side plans or general plans is like having a room full of a hundred people who've already vetted the issue and already weighed in. So it's good to remember. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ardmore. Mr. Jensen, are you here? Would you come forward and give us your presentation?
My name is John Jensen. I'd like to thank you for letting us be on your agenda tonight. We have a little bit of a history, but it's good to be before you as commissioners. Like to also just introduce Jay Henry. He has a kind of an interesting application because there's two different parcels. Uh, Jay Henry is, uh, the owner of the ten acre piece. And, uh, Lynn Dayton, who's also here, um, is the owner of the five acre piece, which is just the smaller north piece. And I am helping Lynn Dayton. I have, uh, helped shepherd the application just as a point of order. So, um, a little bit of history. This, you might've been around when we first started this. We have begun this process in twenty seventeen. We have applied twice and no one would ever let us come for you. We had a metering study in twenty eighteen, which prevented anybody, as you know, from doing much land use changes on the West Side of Provo. So from twenty seventeen, we met with the city or with the, the neighbors, had a neighborhood meeting. The concept plan was different then. We then had a metering study that kind of delayed any applicants. And then COVID came. And generally speaking, it's been a lot of meetings with the city, asking and asking and asking if we could proceed to this meeting. So it's been a long time coming. So this is great. We appreciate this moment for us. In addition to this, we've had changes since then. We had COVID. That has totally disrupted all paradigms, including the studies that the city has done, which I think anybody would acknowledge that is probably a fair variable to say, yeah, maybe the paradigm of today is not the paradigm of twenty eighteen. Twenty eighteen was still around today. I think we'd all have a different housing situation. We have different pricing and whatnot. We have a temple now being built just up the street. The whole West Side has a new dynamic, right? One of our primary objectives is to fulfill hopefully the designs that we've proposed. Our, um, our hope is ultimately to be able to talk about some of the points that the, uh, staff has brought up. And we'd like to believe that in our efforts, um, to get to this application, when I noticed that, I was the person helping on all the previous applications. I noticed when, uh, the city approved the latest phase for Ivory Homes, which is across the street. That piqued my interest. I thought, huh. Provo hasn't approved, allowed any entitlement changes, any land use changes for quite a while. So I walked in, talked to the planning office and I said, hey, if you're approving Ivory, can we now come? And he goes, it's probably the time if you want to start, you know, the city's at least open to talking about it. He didn't give any, you know, guarantees or anything, but so we're here because the paradigms that exist on the West Side of Provo are the same paradigms that exist right there. We're a street across from a very large project. They have lots of entitlements that are occurring. They have the same sewer constraints. They have the same water constraints. They have the same storm drain constraints. We're all part of the same infrastructure bubble. So hopefully some of the conversations we have tonight will be productive. I'd like to give time to Jay, if that's all right. He has some, uh, additional comments to make.
Thank you. We're very well aware of the planning that went on fifteen years ago. And, uh, knows that was extensive. That's been fifteen years ago, however. And things are much different as John's mentioning today is than they were fifteen years ago. So we'd hoped that there'd be some open minds and trying to fit something that would be the advantage of Provo City and the neighborhood. Now we're, we're, we don't, well, and I think we have, we understand that the plan, that the staff report recommends denial. There's some misunderstandings, I believe, that we presented that I'd like to clarify. And then there's some new information that I think coming forth may alleviate all of the plan, all of the concerns that staff has now. All obviously, maybe I'm dreaming or maybe I'm wishful thinking, but I, I'm hoping that we can work with the engineering staff. I'm an engineer myself. I don't say that both that I can, I know things, but I, I've designed a lot of pipelines and, and things too. And I've, I've worked in water for about forty-five years. And so I understand things, but I, I think that there's some new information here and I, I think there's an opportunity for Provo City to be, kind of have a pilot green project. And that's what we're proposing, something there now. The, the idea of green sewer waste, green water reuse is fairly new, but it's not majorly new. It's been around for quite some time. And so I'd like to get into that a little bit, but I'd like to first just kind of give a quick overview. I'll spend in three areas, an overview of the project that we're proposing. And then response to the staff letter. And then I'd like to give some reasons that I think would justify any kind of, you know, not, not sacrificing something for somebody else for us. But something that would be, we want to do something good for warm city. I've lived, I have a neighbor, I'm about a mile away or less than a mile away. We've lived there for fifty years, been in five different homes within a mile of, of where we live now. And so we, we want to do something good for Provo City and good for the neighborhood, neighborhood. So that's why we've come up with what we have. The project, just quickly. Boy, it does jump around here. We have at least my project, my portion. Now we're asking for a double density. Now we're still in the very low density residential zone. It's not the higher, the medium or the low. It's a very low density residential zone. And Mr. Ardmore mentions that there's a lot of infrastructure concerns with that. And so that's what I'm going to address mostly. But our proposal, it's for twin homes, the homes, twin homes, we, we tried to fit it into where the neighborhood. So it doesn't look like a bunch of garages with twin homes. They look like homes is a kind of a quick little and get this to work. Oh. Well, went backwards. Sorry. No, going the wrong way. Okay. Well, we hit on it once, but they looked like. I'm not, boy, this is touchy, isn't it? Sorry about that. Okay. On the left side, you'll see the home. Now these are old fashioned. And so we're going to dress them up a little bit, but the left front is what the home looks like. This is a twin home. Then on the side, the lower side, you see the sidewalk goes and that goes to the backyard. And so you see the plan view on the main floor. You can see the front door and the side door. So, and then the garages will be on the back. And so they look like, you know, to, to keep the feel of a residential area. We're trying to get the homes. Now these townhomes on the right, if we can put basements in, that's just to pull that out of the internet. So we'll do something. I'll, I'll want to work with the neighborhood to come up with the best designs and something that, again, if, if we can work things out and I think reasonable people focusing on the issues and not set, you know, positions can come to some agreement. So that's what we're, we're trying to do here. Okay. And we want to tailor it more to the fifty-five plus. I believe there's a big demand for that. My sister couldn't find anything, so she moved away. And, and there's less impact on that now. I think that's all I need to show here. Any questions on what we're proposing? It'll be HOA managed. And, uh, or you can ask questions later on as we go through. Okay. Let me, let me get to the issues that the staff has proposed. Density is limited by availability of infrastructure. Okay. And that's the big one. That's one that Mr. Ardmore mentioned today on infrastructure, water. There's not really an impact that I see on water. What we're, what we're proposing, I think would reduce the overall water use. It would definitely reduce the per person use because there'd be more people with the same water use. So I, I would say that the water infrastructure is at least my opinion and staff can look at that or engineering is really a, a non, non-issue here on the volume of water. Stormwater is the same way. There's very little difference in what yield of storm waters that go down, whether they, we go to what our density is, current density or to what we're proposing. The issue is in the sewer. And just one quick, I have two comments on that. I'll, I'll be quick. But the first one is the volume of sewer actually going into the system isn't dependent on the number of units, on the number of people that are in the units. And if you had take. And if you take large homes, you're going to have more people. There's statistics I'm sure that would say there may be four to six people per home. And you have double the number of homes in there. And if you say two to three units, you know, people for those smaller homes, then you really don't increase the number of tenants that much. Okay, so that, that's one part of it. Is it a large, there's not a double in volume of sewer going into the system because there's a double of density. Okay, the second issue is proposing gray water system. I have a study here. It's Division of Water Resources in 2011 that come up with, if you, well, it's titled feasibility of gray water use in Utah. And it concludes, or states in here, that if you have gray water reuse, now what that is, is in the home, there's some expense for this, you know, building it. But you have two separate drain systems. One would go under the sewer. That's the kitchen sink and dishwasher and garbage disposal and the toilets. So it's kitchen sink and toilets is all that would go into the sewer system. And everything else, your washing machines, your showers, your other faucets would be piped into, and it would go into a tank in the back, in the back. And then that tank would be used for irrigation. And you need to get permits for this. My understanding is that they're, they're available to use. And that's, so again, if we were to do, and, and then the, the study concludes that you would save, or 40% of the sewer that goes in the current use would go in the sewer, in the sewer part, and 60% would be reused. And so if you take 40% going in, you could more than double your number of people. And 40% is, so you're still using less sewer with double the people. We're saying we're not doubling the population, we're doubling units. So really, it's a, it would be a plus to use gray water reuse. And we're, we talked about that before, but we hadn't really presented it. So that wasn't considered by staff on that. And so I'd be happy to work with the city staff, engineers or whatever to see. But we've talked about it, and we're willing to front that extra cost, not just because we want the density in the zone, but because it's the right thing to do. Water conservation, I've spent a lot of time in water conservation as, as an engineer, doing, working for the Bureau of Reclamation as a private consultant. So water, water conservation is a big, big thing to me. Okay, two or three other, I think, just clarifications. Said would not serve the other property owners on the west side well. Of course, if we're using up the water supply, the sewer capacity, then that, that is true. I guess, you know, that, that we'd be using some of their sewer capacity. And so, but if we have less sewer flow, then it would be a positive for the others. Okay. Says incompatible, and if there's any questions. Incompatibility with established stability and owner occupancy in Provo's housing inventory. Okay, established stability and owner occupancy in Provo's housing industry or inventory. Okay, I don't know why they're saying that that's incompatible, unless they think that we're creating apartments, but each of these would be owner occupied. And so we're doubling the owner occupancy opportunities. And so, and my view, that's a positive impact on the city's goal to establish stability and owner occupancy in Provo's housing inventory. The twin home ownership is the same to me as a single-family ownership. You know, you're owning it. We shouldn't say that's less by or less anything. You're, you're owning that, even though you may, maybe some other people there. So that's, I think, a misunderstanding. Higher occupancy turnover. Again, I'm not real sure what this means. If somebody in a twin home would turn over earlier than, you know, sooner than somebody in a, in a home. We live in our current home. We've lived there for four and a half years. And I look down the street, more than half of them have turned over since we've, we've lived there. So it turns over, you know, quite a bit. And one of them's twice. He's building another home, I mean, the second one in. Okay, so that's, that's my response. So I'm thinking that if this gray water reuse can be effective and we can use it, that that alleviates all of the concerns that staff had. And again, I don't want to speak for them. Obviously, I can't, so they'll, they'll speak to that. Okay, five, four reasons why I think the city would benefit by this development as opposed to a single-family development. My, my lot in particular is fairly long. And so you'd have one street that goes down from one end, from Geneva Road to 2800 West, and you'd have homes on both sides. You know, to me, that doesn't give a lot of character appeal. You know, you have cars that would screen through it. It invites others to do that. By getting additional density, not only do we get additional density, had hopefully no major impact, but it gives us creativity to develop something that's nicer and better for the community. We'll have a city park. Now, that's not an expensive Provo City. That's expensive to homeowners there. There'd be the, you know, other, other benefits of, of living in there. And it'll be beautiful, well-managed HOA. And I think, well, yeah. Let's see if I've. So a little, little more density, but, but beautiful. And so I think that's one reason. A second reason is affordability. We all understand that, and we, we know that. You know, what this does for affordability, it provides twice the inventory at a reduced profit. And both of those are contributing factors to our housing affordability crisis. And again, it doubles homeownership opportunities. Okay, water conservation. We're running out of good, developable water. Okay, I think we all understand that Utah, Great Salt Lake is the lowest level it's, it's ever been. There's a crisis coming. It's, it's already here, but it's, it's coming. I think we all need to be concerned about that. And this project doesn't use less water necessarily. And I think that was another misunderstanding. I never said that it would use less water. I think it will because 20, if we use this gray water, there's 21% of the reduction in water use. So I think it will use less water, but the per capita use will go down quite a bit. So it is a water conservation-minded project. Okay, and I, I believe that as water gets more, well, scarce, there's greater demand on it, that water rates will go up. Okay, in fact, there's been talk of a water conservation measure, just raise rates. You know, Utah's water rates are some of the lowest in the nation. But we live in the second driest state in the nation. So once rates go up, I think the first thing that's going to happen is people will start reducing their outside water use. And some of these big lots that are on the ends of this, you know, 145-foot-deep lots, I think, have a good chance. I've, I've seen already where you go with knots of deep lots and the backyards are, are weeds. So I think water conservation. And the last thing is, I think it better addresses a public need now and in the future. Wayne Gretzky, great hockey player, was once asked what's his secret to his success? He said, because he tries to skate to where the puck, puck will be. So we can chase things, or if we can see where things are going and then get there before. I think there's a great need for what there, like I started out saying, there's been a lot of change in the last two years, three years, five years, 10 years, 15 years. Let me just conclude with the article that I read that states how I feel about things. It's, it was, it's in the Desert News. It's titled, Why Falling Birth Rates May Bring Chaos to Housing. Says, the article points out that housing and families are deeply linked. Okay, that's always been true, I'm quoting here. But it's an especially pressing point right now for two reasons. First, the cost of housing is bonkers. And second, family sizes are on the decline as Americans have fewer and fewer kids. Over time, these two realities are going to crash headlong into each other. One consequence of this trend is smaller households. In the short term, changing family dynamics and rising housing costs may reshape the types of homes people want to buy. Part of the solution is more family-oriented housing in centrally-located neighborhoods rather than out in the distant peripheries. I've heard that referred to as urban sprawl. He concluded, my hope is that places that currently are currently thriving, including Salt Lake City, where I currently live, manage over the long term to thread the needle through both housing and population growth. So that, that's what we're hoping to do, is to try to find something that meets good with everybody. So that's, that's my, you know, I guess, a just request that we have the opportunity to, to create something that we feel is, is good for the community. And that density, and I think was very low, if not of positive impact, will be the thing that Provo City needs to address affordability and the water conservation and the other needs that the city has.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
I'm open for questions, if you have questions.
Any questions for the applicant and the commissioners?
I have a question. What, what is the, your average price of this home? Do you propose, or what's your thoughts?
Well, I talked to, there's a 55-plus development in the Fields. It's in Orem, about a quarter mile north of us. And there, they were selling for 400, 450,000. Now, ours will be a little bit bigger than that. It says they just sold out. There's a waiting list for them. So I'm hoping to be in the mid, you know, low to 400, to mid 400,000.
And I guess I wanted to ask you, what was your thought process in having this be a higher-density street? I mean, what, what, how did you come to that?
Well, I, that's an excellent question. Thank you for asking. We, we have a son that lived in Las Vegas, and he bought a home. And right around the home was a nice park. Okay, I've, and I've always thought, it's just been in the back of my mind, it'd be nice to live in a place that has a nice park. And so when I was introduced by city staff to the very-low-density residential zone, that really struck with me. I thought, well, that's exactly what I want to do. I want to create something. I don't want to, I don't get excited about, in fact, I'm not a developer. I'm, well, I've done some develop, just carving up in lots. I want to create something, a beautiful thing for, so that's kind of what. Did that answer your question? With the, the density, the density provides opportunities to create something more. There's really, if we don't do the density, the only thing we can do that makes any financial sense is to divide it up into lots and sell the lots or, or build lots. Now, I personally don't think that's in the best interest of the neighbors. The neighbors can, you know, say that's, that's different. I think we've all lived in neighborhoods where, you know, our next-door neighbor is, well, anyway, that's.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Sure. Can I give you some comments on that? Short, short comments. So a town home right now in Utah Valley goes for about 315,000. Three years ago, that was a typical home that was very normal for you and I to live in, most likely. So we have townhomes because that's a price point that's now considered like below the average. An average home is 450,000. So right now, we have a $315,000 price point on our townhomes. And then we have about a $600,000 price point on the single-family residences. These are high numbers, but generally, they're a lot better than what the city normally would require. A typical quarter acre right now in that quadrant of the, of the valley and in your city, that lot would equate for a house that's worth $1.3 million. Those are from recent sales this year. Interest rates have gone up. Supply chains have normalized, but labor is still short. So we don't expect a lot of change in that. So we like the idea of keeping these lots smaller because if you go to a, a lot that's around 4,000 to 5,000 square feet, we're at a $600,000 price point on a house versus 1.3 million. That's a big part of why we want a very-low residential density.
Any other questions from commissioners for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a neighborhood chair for the Lakeview North or neighborhood?
Becky Bogdan, I'm not Lakeview North. I'm the area rep for the west side. So I've had some neighbors reach out to me. They are against this. They say that previously, they had an agreement to keep everything at 20 acres to the unit. Yeah, so one house for the 20 acres. So this violates that. They're willing to settle on the four units to an acre. That's a part of the general plan, a part of the area plan. But they are not happy about going any denser than that. And as far as the west side, we've battled with people wanting to go higher. This is not just for this particular development. From what I understand, this is for the west side altogether. And that is the problem. That's a problem for my neighborhood. That's a problem for Lakeview North, Lakeview South, for Utah, Provo Bay and Sunset. And I do not want my sewer backing up into my home. I'm south of that Trump line, and I would not appreciate that. I very much do appreciate the, the detail that's gone into this. I don't want my sewer base to go up any more than they are to pay for additional sewer connections. And I'm sure we're all feeling that pain, paying for the new sewer treatment plan. And the people on the west side, I'm very sure, feel the same because I see all the grumblings of all the bills going up. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other neighborhood chairs for the west side? Area specifically, the Lakeview North neighborhood? Okay, do we have any neighbors that would like to speak on this item? You would state your name and tell us your address, and then we'll give you two minutes.
My name is Don Bahr. 1969 North Geneva Road, Provo, Utah, 84601. I've, I always say that when somebody asks me. And by the way, that's B A H R. I also always say that because the H confuses people. Just one comment. Words are really funny things. It's interesting that we can use the phrase, or very-low density, in the same plan that almost doubles what the old plan was. Low density. This is not low density, and this is why the neighbors do not support it. There's, of course, less profit because if you divide things up, and then if, if, if all of us would divide our sewer water from our other water, that would save. But I think the savings that have been alluded to are things which are just meant to support the higher density. And this is not low density. Thank you.
Any other neighbors?
Hi, my name is Erin May, and my husband and I, we border this project. We own about half of the south border. So we're the, we're the property, and we live there, and we love it. This goes against the plan that we've had. There are areas that are still to be developed that are higher-density and that are slated to be higher-density. This area is not one of them that needs to have the higher-density housing. It doesn't need to be high-density to meet the goals of the city. We have other places that are already planned out in the general plan that meet that. I don't know what else to say. I feel like the, the staff did a really good job of kind of vetting a lot of this. I, I am worried that if you do approve the general plan being changed, that there's a chance that the developers can sell the property and somebody comes in with a different plan. So then we get a little different look, we get, but the density is there, and it steamrolls through the city, and we're left with something that we were, that you were not in support of. And so I would encourage real thoughtfulness as you guys consider changing anything in the general plan that isn't listed out. that isn't listed out and stated in those changes. The promises that, um, or the ideas that are presented may or may not be followed through with.
Thank you. I have a question for you before you sit down.
Yes.
Um, I'm looking at the map that shows the subdivision you live in on the South Side. I don't know if Mr. Ardmore, if you could show us, it's attachment number three. Right there. So which of those lots do you live in and how do you get to your house currently?
Could you show the, um, can I, is there something that points? Okay, thank you. Let's see, I don't want to blind anyone. Okay. Let's see, where am I looking? Okay, this is my home right here. And our property is this front field and this back field. And this part right here belongs to my brother-in-law. So we own.
So you access it off of Geneva?
We access it. Yep, our driveway is right here.
Okay.
And so we access from Geneva Road.
Okay. I was looking at this map and concerned about how a dead end cul-de-sac was going to, um, be accessed. So.
Yeah, right now we don't have any plans to develop our property, but it, I mean, if this changes, then, you know, things can change, but we would like to stay where we're at forever.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other neighbors?
I'm not a neighbor. I'm the owner of the North parcel property. I bought it twenty-five.
Will you tell us your name and address if you live there?
Lindaton, ninety-seven West View Drive, Orem, eight four oh five eight. I bought this property about twenty-five years ago. I approached my brother-in-law about the feasibility of buying this. And he says, well, how much is it going to be? And I told him and he says, if you don't buy, I will. My brother-in-law was Elder Perry. He said, in time, Provo City and Utah is going to need that kind of land to develop. They're going to need more housing. They're going to need more places for people to live. This is a higher density than was recommended back in two thousand and two, when the master plan came out. A lot has happened since then. Any one of you there would probably choke three years ago if somebody said, what is the value of your home? My home has increased greatly since twenty thousand, or two thousand and two. We're hoping to build places for people to live. We're close to Provo High School. The kind of homes that we will have on our north part, single homes, but a few town homes that can be built for prices that people can afford them. If you have a quarter acre lot anywhere in this city, by the time you pay for the lot and build a home, you're in at six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. Most of our population can't afford that kind of a home. We hope to be able to build homes somewhere around four or five hundred. That's still a lot of money. A eight percent or six percent loan on that kind of a, of a home is a lot of money and there's a lot of people can't afford it. But we think there are some people, policemen, schoolteachers, people starting their families can afford to buy a home in that area. They can't buy a third acre lot home and then have to put a six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar home on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other neighbors? Any public comment? I should add that we received a letter from Tanner Nordstrom. I believe that was today. So those have, those comments have also been noted and received.
So my name is Lee Sands. I live here in Provo. I don't know the gentleman on the property. I don't know the neighbors, but I want to do something that I feel like is rarely done. And I want to advocate for those who would probably like to purchase the properties that he's proposing. I know that, you know, the, the math of what a home costs and the amount you have to earn to buy a home. I mean, if you go to college and you make seventy-five thousand dollars a year, you would struggle to buy a home in Provo. If the gentleman's willing to mitigate the sewer, I don't see any reason why we should have the right to override his, his desire and his will. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. We'll close the public comment portion and, um, discuss this among commissioners. I just had one question for Mr. Day. I guess a series of two questions, but, um, before we make a decision on this, are the proposals of having a, a gray water system or, um, the claim that the sewer use and the volume of small versus large homes would make a significant difference? Are, are either of those valid enough to give us a reason to change a longstanding density requirement?
I, I don't think so. They would reduce the sewer. Uh, this is the first we've heard of it. And the proposal that's before you is when you're hearing about it. Our water resources folks have analyzed the proposal. They mentioned to me that they've spent millions of dollars implementing, uh, the current general plan with sewer improvements on the West Side, probably currently up around seventy million dollars worth of infrastructure that's gone in on the West Side. So if, if we increase density beyond what the general plan is currently, we would have to go back and start modifying that system that's already being built. So that's their concern.
Is there any possibility that something like that could mitigate for the reason that we made the rules in the first place or the guidelines in the first place?
I, I would have to defer to our water resources folks to look at that and analyze it. Had we been presented with that idea before now, we could have had a, a point of view on that.
Thank you.
While, while you're up, can I just ask a question? So the two concerns are water consumption and then sewage load, right? Is that fair?
Correct. Yep. Mainly the sewer. Uh, that's, that's the main build we've been doing so far with the Southwest Lift Station, the trunk lines that go all the way from the airport up to six twenty north on the Lakeview Parkway. So anyway, that's, you know, very expensive infrastructure.
Has there, has there been any issues with this neighborhood right here with, is that a new neighborhood? The one to the north, right here?
Bottom, bottom left.
Yeah, that Ivory Homes built that one that you can see on the bottom there. Their sewer goes out to a lift station, the Northwest Lift Station. Yeah.
And, okay.
There is a bottleneck on that system and that's, uh, where, why we're limited right now. All of that sewer will, uh, soon, probably by next year or the year after, be diverted to the new Lakeview Parkway trunk line that's been installed. And that'll alleviate some of the choke points down through the system.
Is that a V L D R density? Like what are those homes in the Ivory Homes across the way?
That was, uh, modeled in our modeling with the, that's a S P D zone, a specific plan development that was given certain densities in certain areas. I think they're somewhere around, I don't know, fifteen hundred units or fourteen hundred units.
They average out to the three or the four.
They spread those out over that whole S P D zone, which is north of Provo High, west of Geneva Road, all the way up to two thousand north. So it was that whole area.
The one that we recently addressed. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Day?
I have a question for Mr. Ardmore. When, when, uh, one of the neighbors talked about other designated areas, I mean, are they in this neighborhood that she was referencing? Or, I mean, are there other properties that this could happen or, you know, they'll come and want to build these developments on?
Not that you see on your map. Um, so, so you can see there's an apartment building here, um, that, that's a higher density. It was already approved years ago, built years ago. This Ivory Homes development that, that David was just talking about, zoned years ago, uh, approved years ago. Uh, the, the future development that would allow higher densities are primarily on Center Street and Geneva, uh, Center Street adjacent to the freeway, uh, and specific nodes in major intersections along the, the east-west portion of Lakeview Parkway.
Well, a question I have is, um, you know, so with higher density, there's higher property tax and other service fees or impact fees per acre. That is like, how does that mitigate? Or, or does, I guess I'd say, what's the, what's the impact that that could have on providing additional funds to address these infrastructure concerns?
I think David would be better at answering that question, impact fees.
Okay.
Could you repeat the question again?
I'm just saying that, uh, higher density typically provides more revenue to the city per acre. And I'm curious, one of the major concerns here is the impact on infrastructure. And I'm just saying, will that additional revenue have any, would it be able to alleviate the concerns by potentially funding additional infrastructure?
Residential, at almost any density doesn't pay for itself. We have to supplement all that with, uh, business.
Business and high density. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, trying to move along with.
Actually, can I ask Mr. Ardmore a couple more questions?
Yes.
Just really quick. Could you just help me with the chronology? I, I'm assuming the Ivory Homes was S D P five and four. Is that right?
S D P five is Ivory Homes.
And when, when were those, um, when were those approved? And when was the general plan updated and in the neighborhood plan?
I think that, that plan was originally Celebration and I think that was two thousand and eight or two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
Two thousand.
Okay. And then the, the, the neighborhood, I think in the staff report, you talk about the neighborhoods, going through and, and revising their neighborhood plan. Is that right?
The, the South, so the, you're talking about the Southwest area plan. Uh, that, that discussion started around twenty sixteen where a lot of these policies came out of.
Okay. And those are all reflect, I mean, obviously in the current general plan, that's reflected.
Correct.
That's the only question. Thank you. I, I, just as a point of discussion, we're in that phase, right? We're discussing. So as a point of discussion, like I think personally that, um, I, I'm thinking of Austin Taylor's presentation. It felt more tangible. It's like, as like a, this is actually what's going to be built. A lot more data and specific answers to the concerns. I personally, and, and then with the whole gray water thing not even be considered, not even being considered in by staff, I kind of feel like this proposal is not on putting its best foot forward, honestly. I think that the goals of this proposal are very admirable, honestly. Although I completely understand the concerns of the existing residents around it being out of the area plan. But I almost feel like, you know, continuing this, giving the proposals a better opportunity to put forth a detailed plan on the gray water, actually real data and proposals and projections, models that staff can react to, plus some of these other concerns, and then revisiting this could potentially be a good outcome here.
Berlene, do you have any more comments? Any discussion?
Oh, sorry. One other thing is also, I thought the point made about how like you could change this, you could change this zone and then just sell the property and not actually develop it as proposed is also a really valid concern that we might want to address if we were to move forward with this.
Commissioners, do you have other feelings you'd like to share?
I agree with those, um, comments. And again, we're back to the balance, right? So trying to balance single family neighborhood homes and then the higher density, more affordable homes. I think really the main issue here is the waste and the water. And, and that hasn't been like what they, what the city evaluated isn't exactly what they asking for. And so I think it would be reasonable to say, let's let the city look at that and see what they think about it. Uh, but there, but it is a balancing act. So there are other areas where we can get more of those homes. That's great. I do like the, the type that they are talking about. Um, they don't look like town homes. They look nice and, but I do agree that we have to make sure that you can't just sell the property and something else goes in. Concern for me too.
Chair, if I could just address something real quick, just for clarification. A lot of references being made to this specific concept plan, right? Um, and their, their idea of gray water, which might be a great idea. The, the decision before you is a general plan amendment for the entire West Side. So even if they followed through, didn't sell it, followed through, did their gray water, made it work for their project, this change is changing the density for the entire West Side. I just want to.
Not just specifically for this parcel?
Correct.
Yeah, it's the whole general plan language. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, I'm going to jump in now on that because that's where, when I read the staff report, that's what I was thinking the whole time was that this doesn't feel like a realistic request with the established utility constraints and these very firm density policies. Other projects on the West Side have been held to the same standards. And it doesn't feel right to me that someone should be able to change the language and get something different after the fact. If somebody wants a nice park and they want to build a place with a park, well, they can build a single family neighborhood with a park. I just, I just don't feel like, um, having seen all the work that went into this West Side plan and all the projects and just the few years that I've been on the planning commission have gone through the checkpoints of this, um, Southwest plan and these density limits and the math that's gone into it and the infrastructure that's gone into it. Lots of people have spent lots of time refining this and I feel like this huge change would undermine all of that effort that's gone into it. It just doesn't make sense to me. So those are my concerns.
I agree.
Mr. Knutson said he agrees if you didn't hear it. Okay, um, do we have a motion then?
So on the, under item number two, it does say, uh, that the request is as part of rezone requests from R one two zero zone to the V L D R zone for property at, and then it gives the location. But what, what we're saying is this is, this would amend the entire general plan.
I think he's saying that there would be rezone requests that would follow if the general plan was changed. Is that what that language means? So right now it's a general plan for the whole city, but with the intent that then they would ask for a zone change, which hasn't been asked for yet.
And, and that's just the limitations of the general plan. You can't ask for changes based on a smaller, more granular scale?
You could if the general plan has kind of goals and objectives, principles, um, for that specific area. Um, like, like one of their sections does, right? One of their sections addresses just that area from sixteen eighty north to two thousand north. But the other proposed amendments are to the entire West Side.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have a motion? Are we ready for a motion? Mr. Knutson?
Make a motion that we deny. Item number two. John Jensen requests approval of general plan amendment to section one point two point nine, Lakeview North Neighborhood and appendix C five, Lakeview Fields S T P as part of rezone requests from the R one point two oh zone to the V L D R, very low density residential zone for property at eighteen seventy-eight north and eighteen oh four North Geneva Road, Lakeview North Neighborhood.
Just to amend, you are recommending that we forward a, a recommendation of denial to the city council?
To the city council, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Do we need to, um, list any other reasons for denial if we vote on that recommendations? Okay. Um, then we'll have a vote. We'll start with you, Mr. Whitlock.
Can I abstain? Is that allowed? Okay, I abstain.
Ms. Wallen?
Are they, are they able to build single family homes on this property? There's no question, just keeping within the density of what's allowed, right?
Correct.
Because I mean, I'm, I'm all for housing on. Because I mean, I'm I'm all for housing on that, you know, in this.
Yes, it's currently zone R one twenty, so they could, they have development rights to that zone right now.
Okay, because I just wanted to throw that comment in only because, I mean, when it was brought up that there's a high school there, I think it would be awesome to have homes for for families and not just families in their.
Yeah, they just wanted to increase the density.
So I'll vote. I.
How about I?
I.
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 Hey, that's five in favor of recommending a denial. And one abstention. All right. Item number three, Robert Olson requests an ordinance text amendment to the S C three regional shopping center zone. Section fourteen point two zero point zero two zero to add standard land use code eight two 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 animal hospital to the list of permitted uses. This has a citywide application. It is a legislative item, so we are just forwarding a recommendation to the city council. And Mr. Ardmore is our man.
Okay. Uh, so this one is uh a pretty simple uh request. It's just adding what you see on the screen. Right here in green, uh, a new permitted use to the S C three zone. The the purpose of this, the need for this request is um comes from the the Rivers Edge Development, formerly known as the Mix up on University Parkway. They've identified a potential client for one of their their commercial spots in the center of that development. And they are animal pet hospital. Currently, the S C three zone does not permit that. But when you look at the purposes and objectives of the S C three zone to to include, and I quote, include virtually the whole range of retail and service establishments within the shopping center. Staff felt that this was an appropriate request. They felt, we felt that any um initial concerns that that were coming up with allowing an animal hospital were addressed um in section fourteen thirty-four two fifty. Subsection nine. We already have standard conditions for veterinary services in in pet hospitals. That should kind of mitigate or alleviate any concerns that would be associated with those establishments. So uh, there's, there's three large sections of S C three zone uh within the city. This is one of them, the River Woods uh Shopping Center is another, and then uh the Provo Town Mall is the third. Those are our S C three zones, and staff didn't see any really major concerns with adding this use to any of those areas, and and we think that it would be a good service for all the additional residences that are going up in that Rivers District area, Rivers Edge area.
Any questions for Mr. Ardmore, commissioners? I just want to clarify, is there any difference between a pet hospital and a vet clinic? Because I I know there's a vet clinic that's just east of this property, so I just was wondering.
If you're looking at the standard land use code, which Provo City uses, these numerical constatations, yes.
There's two different.
There is, there is two different.
We think maybe they're the same.
They're essentially very similar, yes.
Like a long-term care facility versus a same-day surgery, something like that.
Google says there's essentially no difference between a veterinary hospital and a veterinary clinic.
Thank you, Mr. Whitlock. We have answered. And then one more question for Mr. Ardmore. Um, is the re, to me, it seems like a conditional use should be okay for something like this. Do we really need to amend it to make it permitted? Or is that simply because the code, the goals say it should be everything across the range, so why isn't this in there?
So right now it's not permitted or conditional in the S C three. So adding it to the permitted allows it to come through just as a normal business license because we have those standard conditions already applied to it.
It's kind of a built-in conditional use that has less. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have Mr. Olson here?
Actually Fred Barth.
I'm sorry, if you're not Robert Olson, you'll have to sit down.
I can be him if you'd like.
No, 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 it's fine. I'm teasing. Go ahead.
I'm happy with the the staffs vetting this out. We're pleased with uh the work that they put forward. So we're available to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. Do we have, um, this is citywide, so do we have any neighborhood chairs that would like to speak to this item? Speak to us regarding this item? Any um public comment for this item? Anyone who would like to address this? Becky, we're not giving prizes for the most times at the pulpit tonight.
No, um, I have one of these S C three zones right by my house, and you know what? I wouldn't mind it at all. In fact, I even asked Aaron when this came across my email. Gosh, where's this gonna be at? I think it would be amazing for Southwest Provo to have one of these, and I think the people would honestly embrace it. And I was very disappointed to figure out that it was northeast rather than south.
You still have that zone next to you.
You know, I I think it would be amazing, especially West Provo, the smells are already there, right? The animals are already there. Let's embrace this and go forward with it.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. We will close the public comment portion of item number three. And commissioners, do we have anything we would like to discuss about this? Does anyone just want to summarize it and then we can hold hands and sing kumbaya?
I can do that.
Okay.
Recommend that uh the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation of the proposed text amendment. Mending S C three regional shopping center zone section fourteen point two zero point zero two zero to add standard land use code eight two 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 animal hospital to the list of permitted uses as a citywide application with the following condition that the amendment references section fourteen point three four point two five zero nine.
Because we want to make sure those conditions are in there to build in some some protection. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to recommend a pos, to forward a positive recommendation to the city council. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Knutson with the second. We will start with Mr. Whitlock.
I.
I. I.
I.
I.
I.
Okay, that's six votes in favor. And that to forward a positive recommendation to the city council. Thank you, staff, for helping us make things more efficient instead of more convoluted. We appreciate that. Um, I was told that item four was going to be switched with item five because he needed time, but is that still the case? Should we still move forward with item four? Okay. Item four. This is an administrative item, which means that the planning commission will be um voting on it and making a decision tonight. Bob Jones requests a variance through the planning commission. See subsection fifteen point oh seven point zero one zero of the Provo City Code to impact slopes exceeding thirty percent for a proposed residential development located at approximately three seventy-nine east forty-nine hundred north in the R one ten zone in the North Timbukh neighborhood. Mr. Pepperoni.
Staff's gonna be fairly brief, or try to be fairly brief in our presentation, because we have a lot of public here who would like to speak. Uh, one of the, one of the city's engineering standards is that slopes of thirty percent or greater cannot be disturbed. This is not a unique requirement among cities on the WSET's front. Uh, in fact, that's fairly common. In order to impact steep slopes like this application is proposing, a variance may be granted by the planning commission. The reason the ordinance gives the opportunity for a variance is that there could be situations where property is severely limited without the ability to seek a variance. Uh, this application is for the ascent subdivision, which is actually kind of phase two of a project that was originally called the Preserve on Canyon Road. The area over here is the preserve, which was phase one. And the area in red is the ascent subdivision, which would be be phase two. The difference between phase one and phase two is that as you move to the east, it climbs in elevation. When this preliminary subdivision plan was originally approved by the city for both phases, it was noted that phase two could not be built without a water tank being constructed or they're bringing or by bringing off-site water from the north or the east or the south. David Day from the Public Works Department will uh go over in more detail the actual request of the variance and where the hillside will be specifically impacted.
Thank you, David Day with Public Works. Do I push that or? Okay, there we go. Just the original uh phase one, which was plat A of the preserve. Some of you may have seen that when it came through, maybe. Maybe just Lisa and Robert, I don't know. Uh, this is the the new proposal. Like Bill had mentioned, water pressure uh is the biggest, by far the biggest issue with this uh phase of the subdivision. We just don't have the water pressure to supply the appropriate pressure to those homes that are easy right there, so. The slopes to the east in the brown area are thirty percent slopes. And to get the water line down into their uh development, they would need to cut through that thirty percent area. So as you look right here on this um drawing here, you can see the gray areas to represent the thirty percent slope. The red line is a uh a road with the water line underneath it. There's, it's also functions as a trail. It comes down off the the top and winds back, as you see there on that slide. One note is that like upon the cemetery property, where you come off the edge there, there's about a thirty-foot elevation cut there coming off the cemetery. So that's probably the biggest cut. Uh, again, here is the, just another drawing that shows the complicated nature of this subdivision. Uh, up, up far to the east, you see that green area um and blue up to the right. So I have a pointer here. Yeah, yeah, somebody's helping me. Thank you. That's a debris basin in case there is uh an event that would bring debris down those uh gullies that are up there and and protect the homes down below from from that event. Also, uh, if you look, you can follow the water system comes from this, what's the East Lawn access road? It comes up through East Lawn and then back down the hill to the subdivision. That's because that's where the water has to come from to be at the higher pressure zone. Um, and that's what makes this one so complicated is getting that water from the higher pressure zone over to this vicinity. Let me show you a few views. This is pictures that Brandon took the other day of the hillside. You can kind of see the slope that's in question. Uh, this is the uh existing debris basin that's part of phase one. Uh, that that cut would go up through this canyon right here. Those are existing pictures. So. Okay, it keeps shifting. There we go. Well. Sorry, I'm trying to stop at the next slide, but it won't let me. Can you help me out, Rachel? There we go. So here's a couple like aerial pictures of of the area. The 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 water line would come up through this area right here. So you go to the next one. Uh, and then that's just another picture. Can you go to the next slide? So here, here's an attempt to kind of lay it on the all on the same drawing. There's, it's really complicated there, but I I wanted to point out the influence of this area right here uh of where we're uh expecting disturbance of thirty percent slope. Can you go to the next? On and so that kind of zooms in on it a little better. And maybe the next note back to that one. Sorry. So if you look really close, you can see a little a line that kind of goes right along here and up. That's, that's the area of influence to create this cut. So so the, these little lines here and here would be the thirty percent that would be disturbed. And down along the brow of the hill. So we just wanted to point that out so that everybody knew what what we were here to talk about tonight. Do you have any questions?
Will you just tell us why the that cut is necessary? Why, why are we even talking about there being a a line over there, just so that everyone understands?
This is the proposal that was brought to us. We, we had seen uh previous proposals that didn't require the cut into the thirty percent that came down through this canyon right through here. But, you know, that's other property owners off of their control. So they brought us this proposal that's before you. We have, you know, we have concerns about this, but it's up to the planning commission to decide whether to grant that variance, so just wanted to be, have you be totally informed of what's going on up there.
Thank you. I'm gonna do things a little differently than we normally do because there's a lot of people who have come and have sat already for a couple hours tonight. I'm gonna let the neighborhood chair and any neighbors or citizens who would like to speak come to the podium, and you will each have two minutes. And um then we will save all of our questions and clarifications for the end. Oh, thank you. Um, so I'm just giving you a heads up that that's what I'm doing. That's what I was doing there. We'll have the applicant come and present, and then I will say more things that are better said afterwards.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Board of Planning Commission. My name is Bruce Beard. I'm counsel for the project twenty-one fifty South Thirteenth, Salt Lake City, Utah. I will try not to repeat much of what's in the staff report, trusting that you have read the staff report. This is an unusual situation, however, because, as you know, the Board of Adjustment normally hears variances, and you're not used to those kinds of standards to seeing them. You're used to a different level of of review. I think Brandon's staff report did an excellent job as laying out the considering laying out the elements of the state law and the city code, which tracks that regarding how you get a variance. The most important part, I think, is the first point of the analysis from Brandon. And that is, is there a hardship related to the property that denies the property the right to get what everybody else has? And in this case, that's absolutely clear because the hardship is there's two hardships. Number one is the geology, the geography is simply there, and there's no two ways around it. And it was completely contemplated when this phase two was approved. The other hardship is the property does not control the other way to get out. So they have literally no other way to do this project other than to go through this site. So that's the most fundamental of the uh variance standards. In fact, there is a Utah Supreme Court case that I'm sure your counsel will know of where a variance was denied in Salt Lake County regarding a thirty percent development. And the Supreme Court basically said, you can't deny that kind of a variance, otherwise you would destroy all the value of the property. This property has always been, is zone four, has preliminary approvals for more lots than are actually being proposed here. So that's the key fact here. I want to make it clear that I I agree with almost everything. I want to make it clear that I agree with almost everything in the staff report with a couple of minor exceptions. If you have your staff report in front of you, I would ask you to turn to page three of your staff report because I'm going to make a couple of minor disagreements with, not so much what Dave said, but what's implied in the staff report. And that is if you go to page three, the paragraph, the second paragraph from the bottom, it's actually the last full paragraph on the bottom. It starts with the applicant would like to install a water line. The, the second sentence reads, "The approximate width of the widest areas of disturbance would be 300 feet with a maximum depth of 30 feet." That implies that we're doing 300 feet of 30% slopes. That's actually not correct. What's correct is there's a total disturbance of 300 feet, but only a small fraction of that is actually the 30%. I have, I didn't see the staff report in time to get this added or do some fancy slides and I apologize. I'm going to give you something that's actually in the record and perhaps your technical people can, this is one, one copy for each of them. These are the, the plan sheets that I'm sending out to show what is actually in the plans. And you will see them and what you'll see is you'll see a slope that looks like that varying from flat to 30% and then a line, which is the resulting grade that's proposed. And you'll see a note on there that shows where the 30% actually is. It's a very small fraction of what the 300 feet is. In fact, as your engineer will tell you, engineers mark these as stations and then they do cross sections through the various stations. There are three affected stations here, stations 10, 11, and 12. And in section 12, in section 10, the maximum length of the fill that's except, of the 30% that's impacted is 90 feet, not 300. And in sections 12 and 13, it's actually only about 40 feet. So that's the first point is it's actually nowhere near the intrusion that it, that it sounds like. There is a 300-foot wide disturbance, but it's not of the 30% slope. So that's point number one. Point number two is that while Bill is correct that most, a lot of cities with foothills have 30% slope requirements, most of them distinguish between what's called natural 30% slope and what is a fill 30% slope. Because obviously you're trying to protect what's natural and not what's fill. I think it's common knowledge among engineering staff and I will promise you, I will, I'll report to you that I have been advised by the prior landowner that most of this land that's being affected is not natural 30% slope. It is a fill slope. In fact, I believe the city over the course of several years has told the prior owner to actually stop filling and take care of the fill and get rid of the fill. Much, I believe that essentially all of the 30% slope that is being disturbed here is not natural 30% slope. It's man-made fill 30% slope. So when you add the two factors that are, that are important here, that it's not natural 30% slope and that there's no other way to get down and enjoy the property right of development, which was essentially already approved, then we believe that there's essentially, we hope, I don't want to say you have to do it, but I think you really should do it because the standards are met here under the variance. And the report goes through the other standards. Does it affect the general plan? Well, of course it doesn't because it's already zoned for it and it's already tentatively approved. So it by definition can't cause any more impact than was already anticipated. It is essentially fulfilling what the city has already envisioned for this property of development. It's just another way to do it. And frankly, the 30% slopes are going to be essentially invisible. I want to talk about two other things. One is there's a mention in the staff report in the paragraph below that regarding the detention basin. I don't want to get caught up in the detention basin because that's not an issue for the variance. I just want to indicate that we believe we have a letter that we provided to the city that says we don't have to comply with those rules, but frankly, whatever the law is, we will comply with the detention basin rules, whatever it may happen to be. So it's not relevant to the issue of granting a variance. The third thing I want to discuss is very briefly, and that is if you turn to the last page of the staff report, you will see a staff report from the Public Works Department. It doesn't really say they disagree with this alignment. It instead, if you turn to that last page, recommends only two things, that they're concerned about it, but the last two sentences say the basis for those concerns, that no information has been provided to show how the slope will be restored to a natural condition. And second, no geotech report showing slope stability has been submitted. The answer to both of those is, well, we, we don't intend to restore the 30%. In fact, it would be impossible to restore the 30% because there's going to be a water line there. Instead, there will be revegetation, of course, and we'll comply with whatever the city's current laws are regarding revegetation of a disturbed slope such as this. And the final sentence indicates no geotech report showing slope stability has been submitted. That's true. It's not normal to do that at this stage. And of course, the simple way to fix that is make sure as a condition of the variance that we comply with the city's geotechnical requirements. No one wants an unsafe water line. And we would suggest that the way to do that is during the construction phase, have a simple geotechnical engineer on site, surveying the property and making sure that the geotech complies with the city's standards as it has to. I mean, this is one of those conditions that, you know, we, we promise also not to, anyway, I have an old joke about it, but I won't do it in many of these hearings. We promise to comply with the law on the geotech rules and we will comply, do whatever it takes to comply with the law. That's our brief presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I would ask the courtesy, the standard courtesy of a chance to have a brief response to whatever the neighbors might say. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd like to thank the staff for their hard work on that, on this.
We're going to have you stay here.
Yes, ma'am.
Not at the podium, but stay in the room. We're going to let everyone else give their comments and then we're going to save all of our questions for the end.
Absolutely happy to do it. I'm doing it however you want, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Okay, we, as you know, have a huge agenda tonight. So I'm going to ask that as the public comes forward, we're going to start with neighborhood chair, but then we'll have anyone who would like to speak. Let's avoid unnecessarily repeating comments during the public hearing portion so that everyone can be assured that your voices have been heard. I'd like to read in the names of those that we've received letters and emails from. We received letters from Joe Carden, from Craig and Susan Christensen, from Wilford Baird, from Julie Hollingworth, from April Baird, from Andrew Wilson, William Taylor, Carl and Carolyn McKay, Peter and Angela Morick, Betty Jo McClellan, Logan Wolfe, and Sharon Memmett. We've read your comments. We appreciate you taking the time to share your ideas and concerns with us and you do not need to repeat these ideas again tonight. We ask that if you have already written to us and choose to speak tonight, please limit your comments to things you have not already expressed to us. And each person will be limited to one time at the podium and two minutes. And we will let you know when your time is up. So we'll start with the neighborhood chair. Is there a neighborhood chair for the North Timview neighborhood here? Is she the neighborhood chair? Okay, let's just have public come up and don't push each other over to get to the pulpit. That's all I ask. Podium. Two minutes for each set of comments.
My name's Debbie Schwording and I live in the Preserve. I live right underneath the Catch Basin. And if you just raise your hands if you live in the Preserve so they can see who's come. We've also filled out paper for you guys. We sent it in with all of our names and addresses and emails. There were, I can't remember, 50, I think, total on there. So there's a lot of people have a lot of questions. On Angela's, she said that what we're concerned with is critical hillside overlay zone and it's called Chow's. And if any developer, I'm not about the developer or his legal people or any of that. What we're about is what we have already seen going on there. And we live, again, I want to stress this to you, we live right below the Catch Basin. And when we all bought those homes down there, we were told by Dave Brotherson that the city, they didn't recommend, they made him put in that Catch Basin. And we have been told by our neighbors who live over there, we're from Orem originally. I don't know all the history on the hillside, but there has been basically a hundred-year flood there and debris washed down. It's well documented. Came right down actually through that ravine that they want to bring this pipeline down through. The Catch Basin that's there, and I have video on my phone and pictures, has been dismantled and has had dirt and sand poured in it. This is the Catch Basin that would save my home from a hundred-year flood that was told to the property owner previously, to whoever the new property owner is. It had to be there and that was told by the city. I don't know how the city can possibly say now, we don't need that. I have a huge investment there. All the neighbors that raised their hands have an investment there. All the neighbors that were on the papers that we sent in, that we all signed.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to give me their time? Can we do that?
Sorry, we can't do that. Okay.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your concern on this matter. I know you can see that it's extremely stressful to us and I feel like if we could postpone it or look at it some more, there might be other ways to get water, but to just get rid of a Catch Basin, build homes on it and allow us to be subject to something that was important before.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other public comment? Tell us your name and address. And you got two minutes.
Boyd Lovelace, I live on 5069 North Kingen Road. The hundred-year flood was a reservoir that East Lawn owned that came down through there. That was a hundred-year flood. I've lived there 61 years of my 62 years. I don't have a concern with the pipe coming down through. The owner ought to be able to develop it like he told, was told that he could. I have a problem with the cutting of the toe of that hill that was done. That's the problem that I have. What that will lead to is homes that are being built on a gully that's not shown on this map. That would be my concern. Whatever is going on up there should happen. I knew it was going to happen my whole life. The homes that are built up there are gorgeous. I would hate to see them flooded out, but that is not the natural path of the water that's going to come off of that hill. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Hi, Jordan Tanner. I'm one of the houses that borders the detention basin that was removed, I believe, without permission. So when we hear that we will comply with the law or whatever legal said, I just don't buy it. I think we need to take into account what has been going on there this spring and summer as I've watched it out my back door. I think I called the city one time. They said cops were sent. The developer said, kind of forget you was what I heard from the city. So my concern is I don't know that they'll follow through on obeying what they say they're going to do. That's my thought.
Thank you.
Diane Christensen. And I actually, I live in Provo, but I don't live in this particular neighborhood, but I do live in a neighborhood that has hillside concerns and so I have been following this as well. My point is that I don't believe that this circumstance. I don't, I take issue with the staff claim that this circumstance meets the standard even to request a variance. I believe that the developer has other options to bring in water. It was mentioned that there could be some cooperation between him and other property owners, but that it may be that he has himself alienated some of the property owners to the point where they won't cooperate. But there are, this is not his only option to bring in water. The hardship that exists is not created by the city. It's partly created by the land and it's partly created by the, the history of this particular developer with the neighborhood. Any developer who buys property on a hillside area is taking a gamble that he will be able to meet all of the requirements to continue his development. Sometimes that doesn't happen in our area that there have been developers who have not been able to continue because of the water issue. He is not the only one that has had to go back to the drawing board because of water pressure. And so, and finally, granting this variance would actually create an inequity because other developers don't get a pass on complying with the hillside standards or the grading standards. And I believe that it's going to have a profound effect on people down the line, that this is going to continue and we're going to lose
Time.
Something important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Nielsen, I live at 49, 4883 North 350 East, which is directly below the retention basin. Couple of points, the 30% slope, that's a complete and utter fabrication. That slope is significantly more than 30%. It's probably more like 60 or 70%. It is a gully that finals water immediately down. The developer right now is acting as though the variance had been granted. Today I was up there, he's already excavated down 20 feet. You know, he tore out the detention base and he had to put it back. I mean, this is a developer that can't be trusted. The other point is in terms of qualifying for the variance, he came to the nuisance. He bought after the critical hillside ordinance was enacted and with knowledge of the sensitive hillside ordinance, which prohibits development that may pose an unreasonable risk of erosion, flooding landscapes, other unsafe conditions. That's a classic case. The hill, the sensitive hillside ordinance doesn't permit straight down roads, requires it to follow the contours of a hill, just can't do that. In, in every respect, this proposed variance, is it variance with the city code, with the intents and purposes, the critical hillside ordinance, was something that the developer knew coming into this. He did, he, this property, he hasn't owned it that long. He brought it knowing these problems existed. And I would urge the, this commission to consider not only the needs of the neighborhood, but what it's doing to free potential future development, but the impacts it'll have on the development's downwater from the gully. And this drains, it appears, when you walk up there, you ought to go up and see, it really drains a significant portion. I urge you to deny it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Sharon Memmett and I'm in the northeast area. Bonnie Marr, who is the neighborhood chair, asked me to speak on her behalf because she couldn't be here tonight. Some of the comments, I think Diane Christensen really hit the nail on the head with what's proposed and what can't be replaced. The developer's known for years that this project needed extra water. Many of you weren't here when the cause, I'm going to call it, was created, the critical hillside overlay zone in response to the hope to develop anything along our hillsides. We'd ask that you not start eating away at We'd ask that you not start eating away at that code by eating away at this hillside. There are, as have not been pointed out, ways in that code to do this. So I hope you would go back to that. My question would be, would the city be digging the line or private contractor? This won't be, as the staff reports, it won't create a more favorable environment for the citizens, which is why so many people worked so hard to create the cause in the beginning. I'd ask that you please at least continue this so that the neighbors can review the plans that you've just been given to mitigate some of this. Also, the staff report says that they don't think that there's a way to work with the adjacent property owners, but I'm not hearing from those property owners that they aren't willing to work with anybody to, to, to go around, which would allow them not to cut into this hillside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't start yet. Okay. My name's Rick Schwarting. I live in the Preserve. And the questions I have you guys, ask you guys, if somebody cut the toe up on a hill and was ordered to restore it, somebody destroyed a catch basin that the city required and it was not restored, restored one bank of it, then they brought sixty-nine dirt loads of dirt to fill catch basin, which we were told to protect our homes. Large investments that we have there was not done, has not been done, has been ordered to cease and desist digging and grading and doing everything else. Even today, grading and cutting on the hillside today, and they've been ordered last week to stop numerous times of this work. And we're supposed to believe somebody telling us that they're going to obey what the city tells them when the city has told them to stop and desist this activity? We're supposed to believe that they'll honor the hillside gradients, that they'll honor the geological features that we have there, Lake Barnville shoreline? And they're going to go through a sandy loam and be able to maintain that hill and not threaten homes be below it? You ask us to believe that? I personally don't right now. I don't have any reason to believe that or see or think I should because of not only the actions of the developer, but also the city not to be able to stop him from doing what he's doing.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Camilla Malar and I live at three oh one East, forty-nine hundred North, also in the Preserve. And I will be the first to tell you that I don't know all of the history, but speaking from a neighborhood perspective, I think you can guys, you can tell that there's a lot of distrust going on. And we feel like the city hasn't been very clear with us about what the plan is and whether, and how things are going to proceed. And so I understand that someone bought this land, but we feel like there's been a lot of things that have been happening that are not clear and forthright. And like even tonight, when he said the applicant would like to install a water line through the northeastmost corner, which would impact thirty percent slopes. And he said somehow that implied that every bit of that line was thirty percent. I don't see how that's the case. So I, I feel like the developer is saying that there's hardships here, but and saying that we're implying certain things that we aren't implying. I think everyone just wants to understand what is going on. We, to try and say we're granting a variance and then we'll do the studies to see how it goes. That, that makes no sense whatsoever. You need to do the studies, you need to gather the data first because of how granting this variance would then open the floodgates, literally or figuratively for other properties in the city. So you need to know what the data is, know how it needs to be done, and there needs to be transparency. So to grant a variance before you know what the data is, makes no sense whatsoever. And so we just want transparency. We want the city to know that we want to know what's going on and we are aware and we're ready to work with people. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to clarify something. I think there's a misunderstanding and tell me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Mr. Pepperoni, but the, when we say a thirty percent slope, we're actually truncating the term, which is a thirty percent or greater slope. So just saying thirty percent doesn't necessarily mean we think it's thirty percent. It could in fact be seventy percent or eighty percent. But the critical hillside overlay zone is to address slopes of thirty percent or greater. Did I explain that correctly? Okay. Any more public comment?
Bryce Falinga, I live in the Preserve also, forty-eight thirty-seven North four hundred East. I actually don't have a problem with doing things as long as they're done the right way. My understanding is there's a couple of canyons that come down through there. And my understanding is also that there will be a retention base moved up higher up the canyon. And I don't have a problem with that as long as it's done correctly. Some of the other concerns that I have are this new proposed neighborhood is accessed through the Preserve neighborhood, which is an HOA neighborhood. The proposed neighborhood would be completely separate because it's being done by a different developer than who originally proposed the phase two of Preserve. And so being able to work with the current neighborhood that, that they're accessing this new neighborhood through would be beneficial for everybody in the neighborhood. But also just, as was mentioned, the, the transparency of what's going on would, would be helpful for not just the water line. My understanding is there, another option would have been to do a water tank up above. I'm not sure why that hasn't taken place or, you know, like I said before, there's other options. So my, my only thing is I'm okay as long as it's done correctly and we can work with other community members right there where it's all tying in together. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of our hearing. Does staff want to respond to anything before we give applicant a chance to respond? Okay, you go ahead first.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I took careful notes. I want to try to summarize some of them, which every one of these systems is different. I'm going to go, I'm going to try and find, with a little luck, I can get luckier than Dave. But don't bet on it. There we go. I got the right one. And this is the laser pointer, I assume? Yeah. The most important about, pretty much everyone talked about the detention basin. I want to make a few points about the detention basin. First, when the existing detention basin was constructed, it was considered to be a temporary detention basin for the obvious reason that this property up above was essentially already approved, subject to getting water. Second, the detention basin was built on someone else's property. It was built on property for which apparently, you know, there may have been permission, but it wasn't built on this property. It was contemplating a future detention basin. Second, third, this is the detention basin that's being proposed here. And the city has extensively reviewed it, will extensively review it, will require a bond or other actions to approve it before these lots are approved. So the detention basin is here and from a hydrological standpoint, the detention basin up here picks off the water before it gets to be a problem down here. And that water is taken care of by running into a storm system, et cetera. So the detention basin problem will be solved. And I don't know about you, but this is about the hundredth time that I've been making these presentations where I have to be the one who defends the quality of the staff of the city. I've known Mr. Pepperoni and Mr. Day for a very, very, very long time. They are excellent city employees. They will make certain that the detention basin is put in. They will make certain that detention basin protects the site, probably better than it's protected now. They will make it a condition of future development and provide assurances for that. So first of all, that takes care of essentially all of the detention basin issues, which to be blunt, are not relevant in any way to the question of whether there should be a variance. But even if they were relevant, they're dealt with by the fact that we have to take care of it. The second issue that was taking, that was brought up a few times was the critical hillside zone. And the claim that this property was purchased after the critical hillside zone was put in place, that is incorrect. This property was purchased for development before the critical hillside zone was put in place. And that's the precise fact pattern of the Supreme Court case in Salt Lake County, which set a subsequently enacted code that limited the developability of property based on a thirty percent rule. In that case, it was the house site rather than this site. But in that case, it was again adopted after the property was purchased. And essentially, if the variance wasn't granted, it represented, it rendered the property essentially valueless and undevelopable. The third point I want to bring up is there were several people speculating that there quote, might be other options. There aren't. There are requirements for the slope of the water line. And my memory is, and Mr. Day can correct me if I'm wrong, that the water line itself has to maintain a slope, a downhill slope of no more than fifteen percent downhill. So there's only a certain number of ways to get water off the hill from the new tank. And the gentleman who talked about a new tank, well, that's precisely what we're doing. So, you know, it's, it's, it's another option. We're not doing a new tank. It's just another way to get down. If we were building a new tank, it'd have to come down the same way to have additional hydraulic head. There is no ability to work with the other property owners at this time. And there's no speculation that it might, I mean, there might be speculation all you want, but there's no legal ability to get water to this site other than this proposal. And the other options are purely speculative and not currently available. So that solves the variance issues. And I do commend Ms. Christensen for considering actually the variance standards as opposed to dealing with issues that aren't relevant to variance. But she's simply wrong on all of those standards. She said that the variance, the hardship wasn't created by the city. Well, in fact, it is created by the city because the CHOZ, the critical overlay, creates part of the problem. But it's not a requirement anyway for a variance to be created by the city. The typical hardship is a geographical hardship, a topographical hardship, combined with a zoning code, which is precisely what you have here. This doesn't create any inequities for other developers, nor does it create any precedent for other developers because by definition, all variances are site specific and project specific. So this is not going to open the proverbial floodgates for other developers to per se come in and run water lines or other things through a thirty percent slope. They have to demonstrate the, the standards of the variance are met. And the staff report is absolutely clear that all of the standards are met. Let me just go through my notes. If you give me thirty, fifteen seconds, I'll make sure I address everything. There was some references to cutting of the toe and of the slopes. Well, those though will be dealt with as they have to be pursuant to the city's geological hazards ordinance. And we're going to comply with the city's inspection in real time of the city's geological hazard ordinance. So that is another red herring. The, the final issue is there seem to be a large number of people who were unhappy with Mr. Jones's prior actions of taking down the detention basin, which at the time he thought was on private property without an easement and other actions of Mr. Jones, which seems to have made some members of the public unhappy with him, to put it mildly, and distrustful of him. I would point out that he did offer to meet with the Preserve people to discuss this plan and they wouldn't meet with him. I don't know why, but that's what I've been told. But either way, the question of, of whether you might like Mr. Jones or not is utterly irrelevant to the questions of whether the standards are met for a variance. And the staff report is one hundred percent clear and one hundred percent correct that the standards are met for a variance. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to take questions from the commissioners now in the order of presentation. So does anyone have questions for Mr. Pepperoni or Mr. Day? Ms. Kendall, I saw your head nod.
I, I just want to hear from Mr. Pepperoni, if that's possible to, some of these things that were said. I just want to hear what your comments are. So was the catch basin dismantled without permission? What is the city's stance on that? What kind of an action was that? Was that a criminal action of any sort?
There have been multiple cases or instances of grading without city permits. And as recently as today, a grading was going on without permits. Based on comments made tonight, staff would suggest that the planning commission continue the site and to give the applicant time to give to the engineering department data they've been asking for, including restoration of slopes, a geotecnical report and information from the state regarding the safety of the dam. Mr. Baird said they have in their possession some document that says that's not necessary. We, we've never seen that. And that would be relevant. That's something that should have been turned into us based on how long the city's been asking for other information. Also, in terms of other opportunities or possibilities for alternatives that would not be so impactful, the city would like to look at the option of possibly boring the hillside rather than cutting into it so that we can have less impact on the thirty percent slope. That, that way, we'd like to see how feasible that option is and compare that cost of that to the cost of the proposal as it's been given to you.
Can I, can I also ask, is it true that there's a thirty percent rule that came before the hillside ordinance? The city already had a thirty percent?
Yes, the thirty percent prohibition has been in the city code, title fifteen, for many years. The hillside ordinance was just passed in the last couple of years.
So, so does that mean that this property was purchased with the knowledge of the constraints within the property? Because there, there was a contention made that basically the owner, when they purchased the property, knew that they needed the variance to get the value of the property. And, and the lawyer corrected?
I'm not in a position to comment on the knowledge of the property owner.
But I'm just saying, as far as the sequence of what was in the code, there was already at the time of purchase in the code, the thirty percent limitation?
Yes, that, like I said, that's been in the code for many years.
That's not new with the critical hillside overlay.
That's correct. Okay.
Thank you.
The critical hillside or regulations are all on top of sensitive lands organization, sensitive lands ordinances that have been in place for many years.
My question is, I, I mean, this is an interesting tricky one. Obviously, a lot of strong feelings from the public. And I, I think as our role here on this commission is essentially to, the key question at hand is, does this circumstance meet one of the five criteria for granting the variance? And the one that city council or the, sorry, staff is recommending is the undue hardship or the basically unable to enjoy substantial property rights. Is that correct? Is that how you?
Can I clarify that a little bit? It's not, the, the requirement is not that they meet one of those five requirements. The requirement is that they meet all five.
They have to meet all five. There's not just one. And so the question at hand is, do, does this case meet all five?
Correct. Uh, correct.
We don't need to be engineers and understand the risk and the cash. Like, we shouldn't focus on any of that.
Right. Your your focus is on whether or not the applicant has met his burden and showing that he meets all five criteria.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just for public record, those criteria are unreasonable hardship, special circumstances, um, essential to enjoying the substantial property right, not affecting the general plan or public interest. And the spirit of this title is observed and substantial justice done. I think um in response to Mr. Pepperoni's comments, these are the same questions I had that I feel like they can't be answered. Um, I feel like we're not sure. I mean, according to statements that um it that nothing can be built without disturbing this area. I think we've heard a few creative suggestions. I don't know if they're realistic or not, but I think those warrant investigation about um getting water to those properties. I like the um open mindedness of of everyone saying, we don't have a, some people saying, we don't have a problem with him being able to develop. It's just to make sure it's done correctly. And I feel like that's where that's where all of us um are, that we would, we would love for people to be able to use their property. Where where warranted, uh, we just need to make sure it's done correctly. So I think Mr. Pepperoni's suggestions that let's find out more about the catch basin engineering requirements from the state. Let's find out about, you know, um, what other things have been done or not done, and if there's different ways to do things and um maybe we can work together creatively to find some solutions that enable the developer to use his property in a in an acceptable way. I personally like that he's not asking for a density increase. He's not asking to put townhomes or or something up there. He's just asking to build something that is already allowed by the zoning. So I feel like if we can come to a a place where we feel comfortable with that and he meets those requirements for the variance, that we'd be ready to make that decision at a later date. But that's me. Anyone else have comments on on Mr. Pepperoni or do you want to ask questions to the applicant? Or do we want to move forward and say, let's get more information? How do you guys feel?
Sure, can I stipulate that we'll continue with this? We think a continuance is a good idea.
Okay, he likes the idea of a continuance.
I can, I can read, I can count.
Okay. Do we um want to discuss this further? Does anyone have questions they would like to put out for staff or for the applicant that you make sure get addressed in a continuance coming back? Those are always useful. Besides those three things that Mr. Pepperoni listed that are more engineering concerns?
This is a little unique, but maybe just some uh maybe some comment from staff on how they would normally handle something like this. I mean, there's some technical requirements or some technical options to be uh evaluated. There's uh maybe some neighborhood engagement that that looked to be requested by neighborhood. Is is that, would that be a
Those are realistic.
A condition that we could put on that as well, because it seemed like everybody was willing and interested in meeting with the developer on that.
I would also love to hear from the property owner to the north, Ms. Wallen also mentioned that. I don't know if that's if that's something that's, I know that they have to be noticed, but whether they're required to give their opinion on this. I would love to hear if that property owner really isn't willing to to help with the water problem. I think they're in the county, aren't they? Are they in Provo City?
Yeah, the adjacent piece is in the city and then it's uh county north of that. Um, and I'm sure I can get in touch with Mr. Brown. That's Tony Brown and and I can get to you a statement from him.
I just think it would be helpful input.
Okay, but just to make sure I'm understanding, uh, Mr. South, are you asking that the developer meet with the residents or that the city meet with the residents? What, what did you mean?
I'm assuming that the city will be meeting with the developer already. The residents seem to express interest in in being able to meet with the developer on this in the spirit of trying to come up with a solution here. I don't know if that's uh, if we can.
You can suggest that.
We can suggest that at least. Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. I I sense we might be ready for a motion. So I'll wait patiently.
I'll make a motion that we continue uh to a future date to obtain additional information as discussed in this meeting.
Okay, so to make that a formal motion, you'd say I would move that we will continue item number four and then read all the text there. So it's in the record.
Read the title. All right. Okay. I move that we continue uh item number four. Uh, Bob Jones requested variance through the planning commission. Judges read parentheses.
That's fine. We believe you.
Okay, to impact slope exceeding thirty percent for proposed residential development located at approximately thirty seventy nine east or thousand nine hundred north in the R one ten zone, North Tempe neighborhood.
Okay, we have a motion to continue item number four as written. Do we have a second?
All second.
Oh, that was a race to the microphone, but Andrew South won. And um, do we have any discussion on the motion to continue? Okay, don't put that in your mouth yet because we're going to vote. We're going to start with Mr. Whitlock. I called him out.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the vote is unanimous to continue item number four um pending further information and interaction. Thank you, everyone, for being kind and for being efficient and respecting each other's time. I appreciate that. Okay. Are you guys okay with us moving on without a break? Okay. Are we okay with that?
I got my nerds. I'm good.
Okay, he's got his, he got his sugar. We're good to go. Okay, item number five is also an administrative item, which means that the planning commission will be voting on it and making a decision tonight. Craig Peterson requests project plan approval for student housing located at eight ninety one north, nine hundred east in the campus mixed use zone in the Joaquin neighborhood, and Mr. Weaver will present this to us.
Thank you. To familiarize you where this is, this is at eight eighty one north, nine hundred east. This is but BOU campus, ninth north is on the north side, ninth east on the east and eight twenty north on the south side of this property. Currently, the zone for this area on the left is campus mixed use. On the right is the neighborhood plan. The area shows that it's campus mixed use and allows for batching overlay in the orange box on the far right.
What did you say that?
In the orange box.
The batching overlay?
Batching overlay, yeah. So again, this is showing a site plan of this uh project at this location. Sure, batching allows for up to six singles within the within the units. Allowance of.
Well, is that just basically an exception to the three we were talking about earlier? It's an overlay that grants a a universal exception within those. It's only Provo?
Yes.
It's not even a planning term. It's just Provo. We're special. Okay, carry on.
So privilege them. All right, this project has two hundred fifty nine parking spaces. This meets the city code for the CMU zone for this project. The floor plans, there are seven levels within this project. They're similar to this, similar to this. There are different uh types of units within it, but there are um there are each of each level similar to this type of a floor plan. Hundred eighty four beds and hundred fifty nine units in total in this project. This is showing the landscape plan and the amenities. There is a tanning salon in this. There's a clubhouse. There's a gym. There's outdoor patio seating. So there's a landscape area on the north side, on the east side and the south side, all amenities for this uh for this project. And then we go through a few elevations of this project. This is looking west toward it. Looking towards the east. So this should be facing, um, if you're on ninth east facing the project, looking toward it. And the south and north elevations. This is looking southwest towards the project from the stoplight. That's at ninety cent north. Looking northwest towards the project. And looking southeast um toward the project. A couple of changes in the staff report, just to let you guys be aware of. The number of counts I put in the staff report is two seventy two. It is actually two eighty four. The unit number is actually one fifty nine. The parking is actually two fifty nine. All of this meant meet city code. This went to DRC last week and they recommended approval on this project. The applicant is here as well. If you have any questions, that is all I have for the presentation.
Just so everyone knows, design review committee is a citizen committee? Or is it the the department head committee? That's CRC, right?
Correct.
Got to get all our acronyms. Okay. So it's been approved by the design review committee.
Correct.
Thank you. Right, thank you. Okay, do we have any questions for Mr. Weaver?
You know, I I forgot to say one thing. I apologize. Now that I look at my notes.
You're going to have to sit down, Mr. Weaver. You've already exceeded your time at the podium.
Okay, so this project was submitted back in November of twenty twenty. At the time, there was a different neighborhood chair at the time um then than there is now. This project um does not, is not required to have a um neighborhood meeting regarding this. Um, but at the time, the applicant did speak with the neighborhood chair and um in quote from this email from the applicant, he said he had a great conversation with the chair and she she saw that our project was advancing their goals of moving the students into higher density housing into the area north of five hundred North Street.
Thank you. Still no comments from Mr. Weaver from the commission? No questions?
I have a question. How close is it going to be built to the street itself?
I cannot recall the exact number, but whatever would be in the code for the setback for that was met.
So there's a building that's just down from this, also on ninth east, that's very close to the street. Is it going to be that same distance or will be setback just a little bit further?
As a result of that building, the code was amended. So I believe ten feet is the minimum and twenty feet is the maximum now, but it was because of that building it was increased.
So this won't be as close to the street as that other one.
It will not.
Oh, thank you. Although I do have to say that I looked at these uh uh the landscape plan on page nine of the staff report, and I'm having a hard time believing that trees could fit with with the canopy shown there, that trees could fit in that space if you really wanted it to not look like a towering.
I'll let the applicant speak towards that.
Yes. Okay.
Uh, I'm just trying to do the math really quick. Under the staff analysis on page four, uh, page two, excuse me. Um, the counts don't appear to be adding up uh for me. Eighty four four bed units, twenty five five bed units. I mean, that's already over four hundred units, right?
No, there's one fifty seven units in total. If I did my math wrong, I apologize on that.
But it says the the total of two hundred seventy two beds. I think the total number of beds is quite a bit larger, right?
There are two eighty four beds.
Am I getting that wrong? Right, right. We're saying for there's a total of two hundred seventy two beds. But I'm saying, it looks like there's quite a few more than that, right? Total number of beds is.
There are only two eighty four. If that's a typo on the staff report, the actual amount of beds is two eighty four.
Yeah, it's more like four hundred something.
When I recounted it, it's two eighty four. That must be a typo on the staff report again.
Forty two three bed units alone is a hundred and twenty six. Eighty four four bed units is three hundred and thirty six. Twenty five five bed units is another hundred and twenty five. So you're you're five, almost six hundred beds. It, I could be.
Maybe the applicant can clear that up. Just because that does affect the parking, the number of parking too.
Okay, that's seven hundred and sixteen. I love algebra. I just whipped it up just right here on paper without even a calculator. So if those numbers, if there's one person in the studio, two people in each of the eight, three in the forty, if it's, that's seven hundred and sixteen beds. We're going to let the applicant speak because we're actually done asking, Mr. Weaver. So come on up, applicant. Are you Mr. Peterson?
I am.
Welcome.
You appreciate your time. Um, the total number of beds is two eighty four. I think staff confused the number of units of different types from previous iterations.
Okay.
And didn't update that. So the total is a hundred and fifty nine units, I think, and two eighty four. That that's the total number of beds. A lot of these are studios, and so you end up with a lot of units, and then there's a few units that are four bedrooms.
Do you actually have that count so we can note it? Studios, two beds, three beds?
I can get it for you, but I don't have it memorized.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, what did you say was the total number?
Two eighty four total beds.
Not one fifty nine units, you said? And how many, how many parking stalls? Do we know that?
Two fifty nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can switch the tanning salon for crumble or chip?
We don't have retail plans. Uh, we're, we have not a plan on retail, but um I'm sure we can have some, if you want to come by and visit, we'll have some on the counter.
Well, I'm going to let you give your presentation because technically we're doing this out of order by asking you questions before you talk, but along those lines, I I'm one of those people who's going to ask you every time this is a campus mixed use zone. So where's the mixed use? So that having been said, carry on. Let's hear your presentation and then we'll ask more questions.
Okay, well, um, I think it's, he covered it very, very uh clearly. What we're doing is we've got an assemblage of um parcels that are there. And a previewer, previous iteration of our of our company has owned and operated nine and nine lofts and another house behind it, which is an assemblage of townhomes right on the corner of ninth and ninth, right in this zone. And then an L shaped loft apartment building here. And then there was a Washington condos building down here on the corner. And then there's a single family house right here and another single family house in the back. These fell into disrepair over time. And uh, as we analyze the market and and I've got, I've got children. All three of my kids have gone to BYU. My wife and I both went to BYU. And we've got lots of members of our company that are alumni and have students there. This is near and dear to our heart, this place. Um, and uh, we decided that we would rather than try to renovate what's there, um, build something that was more purposeful, that was more elegant, more beautiful, and would serve a place that we would want our children to live in and that we would want to live in if we were students there again. So we've developed something here that um encompasses the whole end of the block um that parks it uh at the ordinance that's required for the CMU zone and um is amenitized uh to a very high degree uh so that people can enjoy a student life that's there, walkable to campus. We wouldn't be trying to do this if it was further away from campus. It's important to us that you don't have to have a car to live and work um on campus and to study. So we're obviously only a, we're adjacent to campus in two directions and then three, if you count on the other side of nine hundred. Um, and our project has got um a lot of brick. You can see everything dark here on the face of nine hundred east um is brick. And there's a lot of glass. We're looking for a feel that has um a historic feel. Um, I lived in Provo for twenty years, downtown center street area, and we feel like um having something that has a little bit more history than something that's sterile or prison like or very um stark and cold. We're looking for something that feels warm uh both inside and out, and it will be an enhancement to this development, this area and all the future developments. To be honest, we're looking to set a standard that's higher for um multifamily housing that's student oriented near campus. We're trying to do it right next to campus, and so that's why we're doing it on this parcel. And we're trying to do it at a higher standard. It feels like um quality development in this area has has lagged behind. Um, and we're looking to try to make something special happen here. And to set a standard that other people will follow uh in the wake of. Let me see if I can pause long enough for the lag to not jump through several. I think that's what was happening, maybe. Um, these are north and south. Oh, let me go back to this one. You'll notice that the whole front uh of the building on nine hundred east is active, right? We've got doors, we've got glass, we've got activity happening. There's offices, amenity space. The whole left side of this property right here is the gym. Um, and it's active and light and 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 everything else. Right in the center, right here, there is a um really cool in um peekaboo look as you walk by into the interior courtyard of the property. So that's active too, and the social aspect of inside and out right there will be uh really fun, we think. The, I'll go to some of the other elevations here. There we go. We jumped it. So this is that main corner that we see from the other side of the street at 900 and 900. And you'll see that there's multiple, multiple colors of brick. This is one brick down here. This is an entire block. And rather than create a monolithic block of something that doesn't feel creative or inspiring, we've developed this property as having one historic, original brick building design here. Another one with different brick that feels like another brick at the other end of the block. One around here around the corner as well with a connecting sort of feel of new repurposed glass and steel that give this kind of a reclaimed, repurposed artistic feel. We've been inspired by Restoration Hardware's building in New York City, their flagship building, as well as Trolley Square in Salt Lake, and some of these other places that incorporated more rich details to make something that's more lasting and less trendy. So right now, we have, I've got a statistic on that. We have about 129 potential residents in all of the assemblage that's there now. And we'll be moving to 284. Right now, it's 53% parked per resident in this capacity. And we'll be over 91% parked by the time we add the guest parking in and everything else that's compliant with the, with the code. So I think we'll alleviate parking. We'll pull higher density closer to the city or closer to the university. And we'll build something beautiful that's gonna last. So we are also, we're builders and we're operators. This is not something that we flip. This is something that we hold, and that's our history. We've had this property already for, I don't know exactly, it was before I even came to the company, but probably six to eight years. And this, this will be in our portfolio for a long time. We're a longtime operator across the country of student housing. Any questions?
I have a question. Would you help us visualize the space? I initially thought that that, those trees, the landscaping that I said wasn't gonna fit was the 9th East facing side, but that's actually the backside. And I'm wondering what it's gonna be like for those people to have a 75-foot facade very minimally placed from the property line. So what do you, like, what's on the other side of this property to the west?
Yeah, so.
Looks like a parking lot next to those.
Yeah, so this area right here at the top is the BYU. It's a service station. Yep. And, and north of this, and so this is all parking lot right there.
How much is that? Is that 20 feet or 10 feet between the two properties?
It's 10 feet setback right here.
Okay.
Yep. And then they haven't built anything in their 10-foot setback either. And that goes north or west until you get to a BYU parking lot. And that BYU parking lot continues north till the rest, for the rest of the block till you get close to the corner.
What about those residences on the southwest corner of your property?
I think there's a single-family house right here that's a residence. And then I think there's another one beyond that, and then I think it goes to apartment building. But I'm not sure if we have a slide in here that shows that. Oh, there it is. Yeah, there's a, there's an apartment building right here. And then I think this is single-family, and this is single-family. And then this is the service station canopy right there for the, for the fill-up, and then over here is the parking lot.
So the only reason I, I worry still is first of all, there's people living in those houses, and a 75-foot wall is, regardless of how lovely the architecture is, is going to be very imposing for them. I have 30 or 40 feet between me and the houses behind me, and when they built view lots behind me, the mountain disappeared. And so to have only 10 feet between you and, that would be huge. So that's a concern I have. In other areas of the city, we've required a kind of a step back when it's close to development like that. So I just, I just, I know that maybe we're developing this with the intent that those houses might not stay, and they'll want to build something tall in the future, and BYU might use it for something else. It might not always be a parking lot. So we have to look both ways. BYU's use could intensify, and so could the houses. But for now, those houses are going to be living in the shadow of a giant building if this is approved as it is. So that's, I don't, I think that's more of a comment than a question, more of a, what, have you thought about that? And what, what do you, do you have concerns about that?
We'd like to buy all of that right there and build some more high-quality student housing, I mean, to be honest. Does, it's zoned for this exact thing with these exact setbacks, and we're not asking for a variance in setbacks or anything like that. So knowing that the city made that adjustment in the CMU zone to include those houses and the houses that we have, I think it furthers the, the city's plan to move high-density student housing close to campus. And they won't be in the shadow after about noon, you know?
Yes, but they're entitled to a sunrise. Maybe not a scenic one, but they should see the sun before lunchtime.
I agree with you.
So that's a concern. And I'm not saying we should plan everything for the immediate. We should always look to the, also look to the future, but you don't want to discount the immediate either.
I totally understand that. I totally understand that. And if I was a resident there, I think what would happen was these, these are parking lots, right, behind the single-family resident homes? And I don't know the owners, but we've reached out to them. And what's happening here, I can't read minds or I can't look through the ceiling there. But I'm fairly certain that what's happening here is we have student housing rentals right here with parking lots behind them. And this is the best thing that could ever happen to these owners is that we build a seven-story gorgeous building right next to them. And then they offer to, to let us build Phase Two right here by buying their property at absurd prices, or they develop it themselves. So because this is in the zone and it's used already, I think, as student housing, I feel less bad about it and more like we're gifting them a big opportunity.
Well, I'm not sure they see it that way, but I appreciate your positive outlook. I'm sure there's students living there, but students are people too.
Can I give you, of course they are. We've got a lot of vacancies coming up. I'm joking, but at the same time, I, but I have, I'm serious. This is gonna be a glorious place to live.
It looks fantastic.
Thank you. Speaking to the future, though, one of the things that we've had to deal with in terms of staff and future and public works and planning and traffic is that we own this piece right here all along that. And because this road right here, 820 North, is going to be considered in the future more than a B-road. I don't know what it's called. It's a thoroughfare to the freeway, I think.
Is it slated?
It's a collector in the, in the plan, right?
I think it's, this acts as a collector up here, but I think that's gonna move more towards this. So we've sacrificed for the future of the world, this turn lane right here. And then an extra section back here that we've had to redesign twice for. We get it, and, and we're happy to work with staff to make things productive. But, you know, I guess my, my comment is that we're very excited about doing something great. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions, though, and, and take any suggestions into account. I should say also the DRC gave us about four specific comments. And we've already incorporated them all. You don't see them in the, the renderings, but we've sent them, and we've already incorporated theirs. So we're very much team players and happy to look at, at options that might be possible.
I would love to know if this is going to be affordable living, or if it's gonna be so awesome that people won't be able to afford it. And then my second question is, do you have an, like a sample of the layout? So we can see the, like, where the studios are and the two bedrooms, and we can kind of get a vision of that?
Yeah, we may have a sample of floor plans. Yeah, so here's a sample floor plan right here.
Can you walk us through it? Do those numbers mean the number of bedrooms?
So this is an upper level. The courtyard is on Level Two, and this is open to above right here. And so these units look into the courtyard. And all the rest of the units look outward, and there's a, there's a corridor right here. So the ones that say four right here are for four tenants. These ones are shared bedrooms, so these are more affordable bedrooms. It's a long shared bedroom. It's not a tiny shared bedroom, but it's, but it's shared, so it's more affordable. And this is shared. These are shared right here, or those aren't. Those are, that's a four. But these longer studios are shared. But all of these other ones that don't have a number in front of them, this is a five-bedroom. But this is a studio, studio, studio right here in front. And all of these back here funding, facing in-and-outer studios in the back. And then this is a four-bedroom, a four-person, three-person, three-person, five-person.
How many floors?
It's seven floors. So it's two podium, and then there's, there's four and a half units. The street staggers, and so we've made the accommodation for the grade change so that we don't have seven full floors. We've got six floors and then half a floor where the grade is higher.
Are those elevator shafts next to the stairs on both ends?
Yeah, this is elevator, and this is elevator. Yes. So there's, there's two sets, one of each, and they go down to the bottom of the parking garage.
Commissioners, I've hogged all the questions. Do you guys have other questions for the developer?
The height is less than the, than the code allows, which is nice.
So the code allows 75 here, and it pencils out at 73 and a half.
And the building that's south, that is so close to the road, do we know what height that one is? Is that one 75?
I don't know.
Just curious. I, I do appreciate that it steps back. I think the design is beautiful. Thank you so much for trying to create something that will look like it's gonna last a long time. I've lived here my whole life, and those buildings that were there, I remember when they went up, we thought those aren't gonna last 10 days. They looked like they were card houses.
Yeah.
And so thank you so much for doing this. I live in the neighborhood north, and will be thrilled to have something like this to drive past. And the fact that the ordinance changed, and so it's not so close to the road, I just want to jump for joy. Because I can't tell you how many people complain about how close that building is to the road, and it just makes you feel like you're in New York City, and that's not appropriate for, for Provo City, I don't think, at least for that part of the neighbor, or city. And so tell me where the egress, how do you get in and out of the building?
Yeah, let me go back to the plan. So I can show you first all here. This is 900 North right here. And so there's egress here on 900 North, in-and-out garage. And then if you go all the way around to the other side on 820 North, there's another egress that comes into the garage. There's two ways in and out to kind of cope with traffic, but let me go back to the plan view. So this is the 820 North entrance and exit. And then straight through at the top here, this is the 900 North exit and entrance. So that preserves this thoroughfare on 900 East without any traffic directly entering or exiting the building.
Is, is there a multiple-level parking garage?
Yes.
So this is just the upper level, and then there's one underneath or the other way around?
There's two underneath.
Okay.
So you come in here, if you're coming off of 900 North, you come in here, and you follow the slope of the grade as it drops from 900 North down to 820 North, one level, down to the lower limit. So there's a ramp right here, and then you turn, and you continue, and then you continue down, or you continue up depending on which direction you're gonna go.
I appreciate the right turn lane because that's nice to have that there.
Yeah, the city required that to make this intersection perform functionally when it's got a higher capacity and demand when it turns into that collector.
Are these the only visitor spots, those 10 that we see right there, or are there more than that?
Those are indicated as visitor, but there are more than that in the building. But those are visitors that are directly marked so that you can come to the leasing office and investigate the property, even if you don't know somebody that you're coming to visit that's a friend.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention, we did receive a letter from a resident, from Hannah Dixon. Her primary concern was just parking. I know you've spoken to it a little bit, but just curious. It, it sounds like you're about 50% tenant parking ratio, so half a stall per tenant.
No, we're 91.
91, okay, okay.
So the, the parking stalls-
Including guests?
Yeah, that's my question. Okay.
Yeah, so the code requires an 80% ratio per tenant plus a 20% additional parking ratio per unit. So we've complied with both of those. The property that's down south of 700 North, I think ended up at a 0.75 ratio. Just for historical sake.
Only comment I have, I think, is one that's already been mentioned about the mixed-use nature. I mean, just reading the purpose and objectives here. I, I should say that I think it's a gorgeous property. I think it'll be a great add to the city and to the campus community. But just this notion of trying to get more use for the neighborhood. The, the way that it reads is permitted in this zone are apartments, batching apartments, condos, and commercial services for the convenience of those living in the area, meaning neighborhood. And, and I'm just wondering, is there opportunity here to include some, I know you said you weren't looking at retail, but something to allow other members of the community to be interacting there?
I can speak more to that. So in this neighborhood plan for this area, it has campus mixed-use towards that north area. But it only requires that there be a commercial component in certain areas. This area is not included in that area to have as part of requirement.
And I think I understand the requirement piece. I'm just wondering if there's opportunity there, really, so.
Thank you. There is opportunity here. I mean, we've got some spaces that are amenity spaces that are designed for a variety of uses. But we haven't committed to a business plan that incorporates a deli or something like that. I think it'd be fun, but I, but we haven't committed to that at this point, but it's not beyond possibility, no.
I think if, if the space is conducive to it, that makes me feel better that, that it could grow into it if, if you wanted it, like other projects have done. I like that idea.
It definitely does. There's a, there's a courtyard landscaped patio seating area outside the building right here at the south end on 820. And this is part of the fitness center right in here. And right next to it, there's an exterior door use room right here that's, that's designed for an unknown purpose at this point. We just haven't defined it, but that's certainly, when you say that, my mind goes to right there to that potential spot.
Does your parking lot or facility have bike storage and, and those amenities that you would expect?
It does, and the city's required a certain ratio of that. Do you want to speak to that? Or there's bike storage that's in the building as well as temporary bike storage that's on the exterior of the building as well for visitors.
Are they like bike lockers or bike racks? I'm just wondering how secure the tenants will feel.
They've got the new, with our new bike standards for short-term and long-term, they have the long-term storage inside the structure. And exterior.
For tenants, okay.
There are these short-term spaces for them.
If you, if you do a Phase Two, would you consider doing married housing?
Yes.
That's been something I think that's difficult for people to find affordable married housing. A lot of being a student.
Absolutely, and close to campus still, too. When I was married, we had one car, and it was tough to be, you know, eight blocks from campus. And one of us would always be stranded and have to walk in the snow. So I get it. If you're close to campus and married, there's, there's a big hole in the market that's waiting to be filled. I agree.
And then just speaking of health, safety, and welfare of the city, maybe not a tanning bed.
No, the tanning bed is an old iteration of that, that amenity isn't there at this point, actually.
That's the physician hat, sorry.
It's Chip Kukis.
She's a doctor.
Be low demand.
There you go. Would you accept a spray tan booth?
Yeah, absolutely. Or a hair salon.
Speaking of physical health, though, the gym is two stories, which is really awesome because I'm kind of into it. But what you see down here on the south end is this really spectacular full glass view right here. And then the second level is also the gym. And there's a staircase inside that's open to, you know, combining to joining those two spaces. So this is the cardio area, and this is the weights, and anyway, I wish I was living there.
I, I just have to say, too, that this reminds me of downtown Provo, the way you have different facades linked together.
Yeah.
Well, did you ever answer how much, what was the rental fees gonna be around? Is this gonna be like a Carriage Cove kind of higher-end housing for students or?
Yeah, it'll definitely be higher end, but there'll be affordable options too, right? On the courtyard, there'll be, it'll be less expensive on the interior courtyard views. And then also there'll be shared options too, so. But it, but because of the nature of the building and the cost of frankly, all that brick and the parking, it's gonna be on the higher end because most of the, most of the less expensive options in Provo are older properties where the basis and the, and the cost of acquiring the property was so much lower. In fact, the, the properties that are there now- uh, are of course significantly lower cost to live in because the basis was so low on them when they were built. So I mean, Liberty Square is still three hundred ninety-five bucks. That's pretty amazing, you know? Um, but it's been there since nineteen seventy-five or something. So it just depends on what you have to put into it in order to make it pencil.
Sorry, uh, one more question. Do you um, do you know the net change in housing beds?
Yeah, so it's about one twenty-nine to two eighty-four.
So one twenty-nine is what exists there in that?
That's what we can fit in the existing assemblage of all of the the units and houses that are there.
No, I'm saying of what's currently constructed.
What's currently constructed is a hundred and twenty-nine beds. Yeah, and the new will be two eighty-four.
Okay, perfect.
All right, any more questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, do we have the Joaquin neighborhood chair? Mr. Lines.
Where do I begin? Now, don't get me wrong, this I've owned my house forty-one years. I went to BYU, I graduated everything. A lot of this is the stuff we need, okay? This is massive, though. I mean, it's it's massive. The one down south of them, uh, looks like a third world country. This looks better than what theirs was. When we still think the parking, what the sat the city has is wrong. It needs to be much more than this. And when you start adding retail and tanning beds, I know you're not going to do that, but a two story gym and there's what is there ten? How many visitor stalls? Ten? How many? See, I doesn't say here in the report, so I couldn't. Anyway, the problem you've got is when you have a big gym like this, it's not just the tenants. It's their friends, it's their classmates, it's people that come to, and there's no provision for that. The parking right behind this area is the worst parking in the whole neighborhood. You have a whole bunch of condos that had one stall per condo back in the seventies. And now there's four and five people in those or four, and it's just a nightmare. Um, the other problem I have is we never had a neighborhood meeting. And I called the neighbor, the previous chair, Celeste, she's a friend of mine. Um, and she said, well, they kind of discussed it with me and we talked about it, but we never really, you know, had any, you know, there's nothing there. And but the problem is, that was in twenty twenty. We never get a chance to see this. We never get a chance to have the developer come like we did with the previous one where she had the whole thing outlined and we knew exactly what they were going to do. I in in twenty twenty, this is not what it looked like, I don't think, but we don't know. I would really request tonight that we postpone this. Let us have a neighborhood meeting, uh, especially the one we're going to have hopefully in the next couple of weeks. It's the back to school one. Because when a lot of times we have these um, presentations and the students aren't there. You know, they happened in the summer and the students aren't there, so they can really can't comment on it. Well, the nice things that I've excited about this time, this is my second time as a neighborhood chair. I now have a better relation, not a better, a relationship with the uh landlord association that's down there. And I go I attend their meetings and stuff, and what that does is it helps me get the information to the students to get out to these meetings and then they can make more comments. So I would really suggest tonight that you postpone this till the next meeting or till we can have this neighborhood meeting and get some of their concerns because you don't have any. You have one letter from one person that said this or that. Um, I think I think they at least need that consideration, the neighbors do. Whether whether or not you approve it or not, they at least need to say to you, hey, we don't like this, we don't like that, you know, type of thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay. Commissioners. We're going to close the public comment sec- section of our discussion and let's talk about this.
I have another question. Do you mind just answering one more question? No, sorry.
The developer?
Yeah, the developer. Sorry about, I couldn't find your name here.
Greg.
Mr. Peterson.
So you've been a resident up here for a long time?
Mm-hmm.
So and so have I, but my question is what are your thoughts on the MTC buildings? Do you think those are? Like, what's your opinion of those? Because I struggle with how big they are, how tall they are. They're just this monstrosity. I preferred the old the old one. I know change happens and they needed bigger more space and all that, but is there any, I mean, is this is just completely a done deal size? There's no changing any of it? I mean, it's really tall. That's what I'm just, did you ever consider that?
Uh, yes and no. I mean, the the issue is that to build something like this, there's a critical mass of the number of beds that you need in order to make a design that's special and beautiful pencil. Um, the land costs a certain amount, the investment costs a certain amount. And if we were to take a floor or two off the building, we would have to totally redesign the building and it would have to turn into something that's typical and that the skin is not brick, that the skin is something very basic. And it would end up being something very stark and more sterile.
Can I interrupt here? Because I feel like um, we can make all sorts of requests, but if the zone that's underneath allows for a seventy-five foot building, we can't say you can't build a seventy-five foot building.
I understand. I just wanted to ask if it was ever considered because I lived out of state for many years. When I came back and I saw the MTC, I just was like.
We have to remember too, the zone that the MTC is in is bordering this really established neighborhood that's always struggled with this encroachment, whereas the other neighborhood is zoned as a CMU and and is intended for, this is where we want the high density housing so that it doesn't go elsewhere. So it's tricky. Those are good questions. I'm just playing devil's advocate here.
No, I appreciate the concern. Uh, and you know, building a smaller building is less expensive. You know, it's a less, it's easier to raise less money, but it doesn't it doesn't have the returns if the building's not big enough. You have to have a critical mass on the building or else it doesn't work. Um, I checked, we have thirty-two guest stalls. That was the the requirement by code, so. And the amenities, all the amenities in here are only for the residents. They would be for a resident that that brings a friend over, but that's a different scenario than is if it was public. Public traffic, yeah.
Hey, let's discuss this.
Commissioners. I think we, I mean, I I've expressed my thoughts on it. However, Leo, uh, Mr. Lines brings up a if the neighborhood has not had a meeting, they deserve that, I guess. I, that's the only.
We would have had a meeting if it was required, but it wasn't required. So.
Did you say it wasn't required because of the zone that it's in or why is it not required?
I think that's correct, but I'll let staff.
Yeah, a neighborhood meeting is not required because it's already allowed within the zone, to my understanding. There wasn't, I mean, when this item was noticed for this hearing, um, around a five hundred foot buffer of this property is what's noticed for the public hearing process for this meeting tonight.
Okay, so the neighborhood chair was aware of this meeting and that's Mr. Lines?
Yes, yes.
Oh, you are the neighborhood chair currently, Leo?
Yes.
When the meeting, when the application was uh created, um, neighborhood chairs are notified of the intent of this app of this application. But that was again back in November twenty twenty. But when this meeting is being held and scheduled and attended, the neighborhood chair was notified of this.
Okay.
That's that's not true. I just happened to see Facebook post that.
Okay, staff says you sent something to the neighborhood chair. Uh, let's see, I had one more question. Oh, I was going to say, I I mean, the parking is great. I I mean, I I know it would be nice if it was one to one, but that's just not the way it is.
It's much better. They're not asking. They're also very close to the uh UVX line. And um, I don't actually have a problem with the parking numbers because they are much bigger than everything else we've seen. Everything else in the CMU zone or thereabouts is always trying to ask for an exception. But we have seventeen bike spaces. We don't need to have as many cars. And so I feel like they're acknowledging the fact that students are going to come with cars. And they might not be saving the other cars that are on the street, but it sounds like they won't be contributing to it, so. I don't have a problem with the parking.
I think it's adequate.
Any other concerns? What else do we?
I I guess it's not a concern. I I mean, but just we wanted confirmation of the actual unit numbers, but it's that non-importantly, just that's just something we mentioned because the staff report had.
Of the breakdown of each kind?
Yeah, but I guess we can just trust the total bed number.
I next to more of that. If there if there's an error on that, I'm looking at an email I got from the applicant and his um, and and his with his goodness here tonight, and again, is confirming that the total is two eighty-four.
So we just don't know the breakdown. But I feel like his map kind of helped me to see that there's studios on the interior and the bigger units on the exterior.
Yep.
I am still concerned about the height, but that's nothing I can scream about because it's allowed in the zone. Um, I don't like that it's high end. I know that that means it'll be nicer for longer, but I I feel like we talked a lot about needs and um, I feel like this kind of high end housing is in need of a different demographic that were the the adult, the graduated prof- young professionals, um, not the students that need to be two blocks from campus. So that's a little iffy for me. I like the high parking numbers. I like the amenities. I like the look of it. Um, those are my immediate thoughts.
I like that it adds a hundred and fifty-five beds to the city in in an area that's needed.
Can young professionals live in this too?
Absolutely. It just, to me, it just sort of puts them in the wrong place. We don't actually want them close to campus. We want the people who need to be close to campus, close to campus. Otherwise, then we have more cars and more trips and all that. And I don't like, I don't like the fact that the west facing facade is right towering in someone's yard. But once again, he's not asking for any allowances on that. That's, I don't know. I don't know what to say about that. They're I have compassion for the neighborhood that feels like they didn't get a chance to have a meeting in a ti- in a more recent meeting. Um, but I don't feel like someone's tried to deprive them of that. I think that's more just a timing thing, but what do you guys think? Is it something we should continue and and request that meeting? Do we want to say they meet all the requirements and there's no reason to talk about this further or do we want to see some changes?
They they do meet the requirements. What would the um, I'm just trying to think, what what would public comment?
I think you can continue it if you want. I don't know that you could require that during the time that you've continued it, that they have a neighborhood meeting. I mean, would they they met the notification requirement that that um, our code requires? The fact that there's a lack of public comment, I think, suggests that there's not a concern um, that you know, you might be worried about um, that could occur during that two period of that period of time. Um, so I guess I would I would caution you to continue it if you have things you still want to consider, but not to ask them to have public comment that they're not required to have.
Well, also, I I'm just having a hard time, even if public comment, if if there was a neighborhood meeting and everyone hated it and said it's too big, what does that change?
Nothing.
Because we're still by law, we still, they're still, I I don't know if entitled is the right word, but we really have no grounds for denying this project the way we see it right now.
Yeah, exactly. And and that's, I would encourage you to think that way, too. I mean, the concerns you have about height or proximity to adjacent neighborhoods are things that if those are concerns, you should consider as a planning commission, amending those zones going forward. But you have an ac- applicant that's followed our process, who's met our our design guidelines, who's met our standards, who's been through our design review committee.
Not asking for any exceptions.
Right, he's basically met everything we've asked him to do and now to hold him hostage to say, well, we're not sure we like it. That's kind of our fault then because we've created this situation that he's in now. Um, so I would just suggest that if he's met those, then you're you're probably prone to approve it or or consider to recommend a positive a positive approval on that. Um, and the issues that you're concerned about maybe become a future conversation that we ought to think about. Does the zone need to be changed or do those things need to be considered for future development?
Has he met the requirements for amenity space, Mr. Weaver? I the only other project I can think of that was similar to this was on eight hundred, on the other end of eight twenty north and what one, one to two hundred west, one hundred west. And it was um, taking down two houses and replacing them with an apartment complex that was part of another one. And the only reason that one didn't admit this, meet the standards of the CMU zone was because they didn't meet the amenity space and the parking and and how many lots they were combining and how big the lots were. And and so I just feel like we just, we just don't have any. I, we've all been impressed with how by the book this has been, and there may be things we like or don't like about it, but I'm I don't think I can I can come up with a a fair reason to delay.
I feel the same.
Are we comfortable with the noticing that took place for the neighborhood and the voice that the neighborhood supposedly had? Okay, then. Any other questions for anyone? Any other clarifications?
I I would just say that it's not so much the notice, it's more just the fact that like this, everything you just said, this is totally in compliance with everything. So I'm not even sure what the neighborhood meeting would accomplish beyond just civility, but I don't think that's enough of a reason to like deny a property owner rights and delay a project that's probably expensive and in the works.
And I don't even worry about the expense so much as that it's appropriate for the zone and it's appropriate for the general plan and the goals of the of the community and so. Okay, then do we, would do we have a motion on something that we'd like to do with this item?
Make a motion? I motion that we, item number five, Craig Peterson requests project plan approval for student housing located eight eight ninety-one north, nine hundred east in the mixed campus use zone, Joaquin neighborhood. That we approve with the following conditions, that the Brickyard Plat A subdivision be recorded at Utah County.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Knutson has seconded that. The motion was that we approve item number five as written. Do we have any, and with the condition of the subdivision being recorded, do we have any discussion on that motion? Any clarifications? Okay. We'll take a vote. We'll start with Mr. Whitlock.
Hi.
Hi.
I.
Hi.
I.
I.
Okay, we've got six votes in favor of approving item number five. Um, we had decided that we weren't going to start a new item after nine thirty because um, we'll be here all night. I feel very badly for those of you who are here for items six and seven, but can we maybe, do we make a motion to continue item six and seven till the next meeting? Um, so I'm I'm not going to make that motion, but that's what we would need to do if we don't discuss them. Do we have a motion to continue them?
We need to read them in full.
Um, I think we can just say item six and seven.
Yeah, I move that we continue item six and seven to our next meeting.
Do we have a second?
I second.
And Mr. Whitlock seconded that. Mr. South made the motion. Um, we'll have a vote.
I.
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 Okay, we will continue item six and seven to our next meeting. And thank you, everyone, for staying with us all night long.